I call to order this work session of the Morrisville Town Council, April 22nd at 6:30 PM. And we're going to have two discussion items, three discussion items tonight. Town Center Core, Bond Referendum, and Town Council Roundtable if time allows. We're looking to be done within three hours if possible. I'll turn it over to Todd Wright, Assistant Town Manager, and Eric Thomas, DFI Project Manager, to discuss Town Center Core Project Public Facilities Work Session. Thank you.
Mayor, Council Members, thank you for this time tonight to discuss with you the Town Center Core Project. Eric Thomas, the DFI Project Manager, and I will facilitate this work session.
Hey, Louis. Excuse me. Could you switch places with the equipment? No need? Okay.
Okay. So in this work session, we will provide you an DFI Audit Update. We'll also share with you best practices and three case studies for successful town centers. But tonight, we want to spend the bulk of our time talking about the preferred public facility needs within the town center. When we get to that part of the meeting, we're going to break it down into three categories. First, it'll be the town green. Next, it'll be community facilities. And then third, it'll be town office space needs. What I'll do is provide some background information on each topic and specify the type of feedback we're looking for. Our intent is that we're going to share this information with House Levine, who will incorporate that into both of their build-out strategies, both the low-density as well as the higher-density build-out strategies. I'll talk more about the next steps towards the end of our discussion. So that's what the plan is for tonight. So to get started, I'm going to turn it over to Eric for the DFI Audit Update and the best practices and case studies for town centers.
Yeah. We're going to need the masks. Sorry. This is... There is a slide that says...
DFI Audit Update. Most of you are aware that DFI had an audit performed in early 2017. There was an article that came out about a month ago from Dan Kane, a News &amp; Observer reporter, regarding this audit that was done regarding DFI. The audit was primarily done for administrative oversight based on an ex-employee of DFI. The audit found that there was no misuse of university funds as part of the audit. That was the primary focus of the audit. The audit also investigated the conflict of interest policy that DFI has in place regarding DFI projects. And it found through the audit process that DFI also has a robust and effective conflict of interest policy. There were some recommendations provided by the auditor as part of this audit for policy improvement for DFI and the School of Government. The School of Government and DFI implemented those policy recommendations. And the auditor came back in 2018 and reviewed all the changes. And I said that there was, and through the review, found that satisfactorily they, that the School of Government and DFI had implemented policies to correct any of the small policies that were, that were, they thought could be improved upon. Dan Kane, sort of with his report, wanted to focus on that audit and some of the redacted nature of names within that audit. And based on personnel and privacy issues, those names couldn't come out within, through the audit process. So that's sort of a simplified process of what the audit was about and the findings from the audit and that, you know, the ultimately there were no misuse of university funds associated with anything DFI had done and essentially cleared the issue around the audit. But it came to light this year during Sunshine Week, and we felt it necessary to provide you all a chance to ask any questions that you may have with this.
Councilmember Rush Lake.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I did read that article.
Who did the investigation, I ask, in-house?
Or out of the house?
It was a third-party independent audit review.
Is, can the public see the audit? Are any, can request it?
The audit is a public document, and it's been made available to the public after it was completed in 2017.
Okay. Then, did, was the audit have to do anything with Morrisville's conflict of interest that we discussed, I think, at one point early on with our project?
No, the Morrisville project was never associated with that audit. There were a couple other projects where developers had been, there were open RFQs and developers never ultimately selected. The Morrisville project went through a potential, you know, a conflict of interest policy and reviewed, and we found that there was no conflict of interest. So ultimately, there was, I mean, that wasn't part of the audit and the interest of the reporter.
Okay, of the audit itself. Correct. Just a clarification. Great. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, we can move on to the next part of the presentation.
You want to scroll? So this part of the presentation here is identified to really help inform successful town centers as a way to have some input for ultimately the public facility discussion that will be the second half of this presentation. We felt it necessary to revisit some of the best practices and research out there for building successful town centers. And so what we're, what we want to start off the presentation with is some of our research from ULI Urban Land Institute and Brookings, both sort of leading, leading organizations that do a lot of research on real estate development and a lot of research on town center development. So we're going to walk through essentially some of the critical pieces that these research organizations have identified that are critical for the development of a successful town center. So the first is critical mass. This is essentially, there needs to be a collection and a, sort of a mass of similar-type businesses, including food and retail, that will drive life after 5:00 PM in town centers. The second is a mix of uses. So successful town centers have a mix of uses within their town center. This includes retail office, potential for hospitality, entertainment, and residential. Evening and nightlife. So this is essentially, you don't want the town center to be vacant after 5:00 PM. So this is life after 5:00. Includes some of those anchor institutions that drive entertainment, such as theaters, performing arts centers, or brew pubs. Things like that is what ULI and Brookings have identified as sort of those anchors that drive nightlife. Residential base. This is a key piece of what these organizations have identified as key components of successful town centers, and is having a residential base to essentially support the commercial, to support those restaurants and businesses that are located there, to foster a sense of community, and to provide a steady stream of activity to those restaurants and other businesses located in the town center. Parking solutions. This is a one that we've had a lot of conversation over in the past, but essentially availability of parking throughout the course of the day to essentially promote a successful turnover for businesses. A lot of these, the research out there suggested any time limit or the lack of parking opportunities would essentially restrict spending, slow down the performance of retail and other businesses. So essentially, that availability of parking is a key component of successful town centers. And this one right here, I think, is an important one that we're going to talk about tonight with public facilities, but gathering spaces. These are examples, open markets, interactive water features, pocket parts, amphitheaters. Think about it as community, you know, community spaces for gathering for activities and recreational activities. Walkability. Town centers should be comfortable for pedestrians. This is making sure that sidewalks are wide and active and comfortable, not auto-oriented, but having that sort of pedestrian scale at the ground level to make it comfortable and enticing and attractive for pedestrians to walk. And then public-private investment. Having both public and private investment in your town center seems to be the successful model for built-from-scratch town center developments. And then just to recap, a couple of the, the sort of bullet points that have come out from this research on benefits of a downtown. Town center residential apartments have been found to attract young professionals who prefer walkable urban communities, and that the research shows that businesses prefer locating in downtowns that are walkable, where live-work-play communities exist. So it does a lot in retaining workers. Sort of the creative collaboration, coworking spaces have been really popular in town centers. But it's also about these businesses creating a desirable brand and having an attractive destination for their employees to ultimately work. So it helps in retaining that talent. So I'm going to walk through three case studies of successful town centers. And by successful, these have been identified through these organizations like ULI as, as having low vacancy rates, of having high spirit of place from community residents and from sort of reports over the years of, of sort of a happiness within these communities. The first is Suwannee Town Center Park. This is in Suwannee, Georgia. These case studies have also been identified as communities that are essentially within the 10 to 25-mile range outside of a major metro area, which essentially what we feel in Morrisville is sort of that 10 to 25-mile radius outside of Raleigh and outside of Durham, that these would be good case studies to evaluate. So sorry for the graininess of the picture here, but Suwannee, this is 28 miles to Atlanta, Georgia. It was developed in 2003. The population at the time was just a little over 11,000. This is a town center that is 63 acres. It has 100,000 square feet of retail space, almost 100,000 square feet of office space, and then it has a mixture of townhomes and condos and single-family homes. This, if we were talking about a low-density versus a high-density sort of scenario for a town center, this is what we would call a lower-density town center. Buildings are capped at three stories along the one main street, and then you have a lot of single-family homes and townhomes that essentially drive the activity of this area. At the anchor of this town center is the City Hall, which was built in 2003 also, and then a 10-acre park with a 1,000-seat amphitheater and an interactive water feature. It is a, sort of a green-space-oriented town center. You can see here in the imagery. They had two goals, primary goals when developing this town center, the town. It was, one, to preserve open space, and the two was to create a vibrant, attractive downtown and community gathering space. You can see here in the, in the image on the bottom, City Hall, where it's a large open plaza out in front of it, very oriented towards outdoor recreation and activity and gathering. But it does have a retail office and residential component, just at a lower scale than was, what was proposed from Armada Hoffler within the town center. This has been a very successful town center. Visitors coming to concerts, you can, they've noted over 200,000 visitors annually, and the town has even... ...expansion of their park facility within, in 2016. So overall, I think this is sort of a model that we're looking at if you're thinking lower-density. This is sort of a program that you could ultimately achieve with a lower-density model. This is 60-some acres here, 62, 65 acres. But, you know, we're talking about Morrisville here. We're talking about 25 to 30, maybe 35 when we're looking at the, across Church Street. But think about that density and that program that they, that they had on that first slide. The second town center development is Liberty Center. It's outside of Cincinnati, Ohio. So it's approximately 20 miles to Cincinnati. It was built in 2015, and the population of Liberty Center was 38,000 when it was built. So again, a little slightly larger than Morrisville, but just recently done in 2015. This is looking at the density here, a little higher density than the Suwannee, Georgia case study. You're looking at four-story, five-story mixed-use development with ground, ground-floor commercial. There's 660,000 square feet of retail as part of this development, 75,000 square feet of office. That retail is primarily within a couple anchor developments, anchor institutions. There's a Dick's Sporting Goods and a Dillard's. So it's sort of a, has that shopping mall component, but there is a lot of boutique retail associated with this development as well. There's 240 residential units, multifamily rental. There is a 130-room hotel. It has a 16-screen movie theater, but then it has a whole plethora of outdoor and indoor play areas, children's discovery center, and has a library that's in development right now. This is a total of 65 acres here in this project. I don't have the breakdown of the full investment in terms of the public-private partnership nature of this project. I know that it was an approximate, it was a $400 million development, and at the first phase was $40 million of public investment. It didn't break it down into, was it for parking? Was it for road infrastructure? Was it for the plazas? Essentially, the 40 million there for the public investment as part of this development. They do have two public plazas and an active space green roof, so they thought about sustainability through stormwater systems in this development. And then they do have essentially five-story buildings, up to five-story, ground-floor commercial with four stories of residential above it. So that is essentially the type of building and type of development that we had worked for within the RFP, was one ground-floor commercial with three stories of residential above. They have that style sort of development here within, within Liberty Center. The University of Cincinnati, I just identified, you know, the substantial tax revenue and, and fee revenues associated with this development. And the developers were quite satisfied with the performance of this product, and there was a lot of support from community members saying that this didn't have as much negative impact on traffic that they anticipated at the beginning. There were no, I don't have any traffic impact analysis numbers in terms of before and afters, but there was, it was a concern and before the development, and they didn't seem to have as much traffic impact as what originally potentially was a concern before the development. And then I wanted to include one more case study here in North Carolina of Biltmore Park Town Square. Again, this is outside of Asheville. It's within Asheville proper, but it's 10 miles from the downtown. It is a mixed-use development, built from scratch in 2009. Asheville's population at that point was 78,000. Do you have a question, Steve? Oh. This is 42 acres, so very, you know, getting that sort of ballpark again, that 40-acre, what we're looking at in Morrisville for a potential town center. This had a hotel associated with it, 270,000 square feet of Class A office space, 280,000 square feet of retail, dining, and entertainment space, and then a mix of for-sale residential product and market-rate rental product. This included a 65,000-square-feet YMCA with it and also a movie theater. So a significant community/recreation facility associated with it. Sustainability has been a major drive for the development, a wing that has done this project, and it was a public-private partnership primarily around road infrastructure. I don't have the figures for what the breakdown was, but primarily for roads with this project. This does have four parking decks that serve this town, the town square here. So they're each essentially, they're on the outskirts of the town center. The parking decks are at all four essential quadrants of it and service the projects that are next to it, but also the sort of surrounding uses. So primarily get away from surface parking and have it focused within parking decks. And you can see from the imagery here, the sort of density and scale of the development, ranging up to four stories with ground-floor commercial space. Should I, before we maybe jump into the second half, I can pause here and clarify any questions we have with those case studies or with the research around successful downtowns?
Okay. Why don't we start with Councilmember Ral?
Versus, Suwannee versus the, the one at Liberty Township. What was the initial, do we have any idea of what the initial public investment was for Suwannee as opposed to?
Yeah, I'll have to look that up in terms of the public investment associated with Suwannee. That was a significant town, town hall development and also the town green. There are no parking decks with that development. It's lower-density surface park for the retail. So I can look up the road infrastructure, the City Hall, and the, the park, but primarily those images were to show you sort of successful town centers, really the sort of feel around public facilities and amenities to help drive that conversation of what would you all like to see with your town center versus necessarily the financial breakdown of all these components?
Where I was going with my question was because it seems to me that the, the opportunity to generate more revenue would be from higher-density, more mixed-use. And what I continue to hear from developers is that without the rooftops, you're not going to be able to bring in that type of investment. But I think that's really, especially, you know, over the course of the year, when we've heard still issues of congestion and traffic and density, whether that kind of a town center would be really what the council would want. Would we want to start with something like a Suwannee, which I know Mayor, you know, when, before you were mayor, in the last term, we had talked about Suwannee as a good example. So I just want to throw that out there. I'd like to hear what my colleagues have to think about it. But I think that we have to also be realistic that the amount of restaurants and retail and mixed-use and office could be limited in a Suwannee model versus something which we're going to put more money in and have more density.
Yeah, I mean, I really like the ROI of Liberty that you were talking about, 40 million investment, and you get about a fourth of it back each year. But any other, I see Councilmember Rush Lake would like to add something?
I guess I, I'm just trying to understand the briefing. The next steps is what we're going to be asked to kind of decide tonight, or, because it tailors my questions.
We're not looking for any decisions tonight, just really your feedback, high-level feedback. And our intent is to take this information, provide it to House Levine, who will incorporate it in their two build-out scenarios.
Okay. Just a couple of quick questions. And this doesn't have to be answered tonight, but when we, when you go back and talk with the next group, just ask them, you showed us best practices, right? Compared to, could you compare that to what we've just gone through in the last year and a half? Did we do something wrong? Did we, what did we miss? I mean, not that we, it was a failure. I would look at it again, that if the, if the developer had come back to the table with what they promised, this would have been hap, this would have happened. But, so, that's all. Because we've been through this with other partners, and again, everybody kind of what my council member, Ral, said, that you're going to need this in order to make it happen. So that's all. It's just a kind of a comment. And then when that analysis, when you come back, could you also put RTP's impact? Because, you know, five miles down the road, they're trying to develop their own downtown. And they, then they already have funding, and they're, I think they're, you know, supposed to be starting this year.
And by the RTP impact, do you mean the change in the market, in the, the demand for a town center when an RTP town center could be demanded?
Yeah, it does everything that we're talking about in best practices.
Right. I mean, that, I mean, when I look at RTP's town center development style, it has a walkable town center and walkable mix of uses in terms of residential, retail, office.
And then this one's more for staff. Could we look at how Canaplis is doing on their projects? We visited that, so is the baseball stadium up? Did they move it? Would you guys know?
Canaplis broke ground, well, the private developer broke ground on the demonstration project there. Canaplis, that, they broke ground on the baseball stadium, which should be open for next year. They did the streetscape infrastructure. They had challenges beyond what Morrisville has in terms of road infrastructure that had to be completely redone, so that was...
They had a lot of residential. That was a big component for me, back, kind of back to that scenario. Are they, are people moving to that location?
Yeah, that will be, once, once the development is completed, how does it fill up? And yeah, they just broke ground, actually, it was, I think, a month ago today was when they broke ground on that mixed-use development. So it'll be sort of a wait-and-see how the market responds to that development. But it was financed, and the banks believed in the project, so it got the money to go forward. And so the market analysis that was done showed that there should be a demand for this kind of product, but it's sort of a wait-and-see how it leases up, you know, see if the market desires it.
Perfect. Thank you. And then a couple more quick questions. For the town, if we could, next briefing on this, just how much money, and I think we have a running total, we've invested over, let's say, the last decade? Because I include, like, projected with Wake County, the library and road improvements that we're making, and I think we're pretty close to 40 million. And then, could you go back just two slides, I think, to the roundabout, the picture of the roundabout in that town? One more? Yeah, right there. So I think there was a comment to last, our roundabout, can we do something like that? I'm just throwing it out there. Put in landscaping like that, a flag post, or is that something? And I know there are roundabouts certainly in Raleigh, but this was kind of brought up by another council member, and I kind of like the idea of trying to do something unique for ours.
Yes, I think it's appropriate that at some point we have a conversation about how we want to design the inner circle, but I will tell you that there are some limitations. I know there are some utilities that run through there, so we are restricted to what we can do. For example, for example, we probably couldn't put a big tree in the center of it.
How about a flagpole?
I would, I would have to check on that.
That looks pretty nice. It's not far.
Councilmember Johnson, please.
So if you're just looking for kind of feedback and our reaction to what you've shared with us, I guess one thing I would say is there are good pieces to each one of these projects that you've shared with us. The Suwannee one, it's interesting you bring that to us, because we have talked about the Suwannee, Georgia Town Center in the past, in years past. So I think since they have such a much larger piece of land to incorporate it or to create a town center than we do, I think for them to have no parking decks and to have all on-street parking, you know, clearly that maybe makes sense, since we don't have the total acreage that they do. I think for us, it makes a little bit more sense to maximize the land, the use of the land and to have parking decks. So anyhow, so I would just kind of, that was one thing that struck me. And the other two examples do include parking decks. I don't, I'm not sure we need four, like Biltmore, but, and I've been to Biltmore Park, and that, that really is a beautiful, a beautiful place to walk around and shop and to really spend time. So that's nice. The other thing I like to, the two things that are kind of important, I think, are the gathering space and the walkability. And I like the different gathering spaces, the option of maybe having little pocket gathering spaces around, of course, have that big green that we've talked about, to hold larger festivals or concerts or whatever, but to have smaller, little hidden areas to, to gather, I think, is going to be really important. And there were some examples in here. You could see some pictures of that. I also like the, the green space and the use of the rooftops. And of course, you know, it looks like the topography of the land lent itself to that, which, that would be really nice to, that is something unique, that we need to think about incorporating, something really unique and different that is not anywhere else around here. I mean, you know, we talk about downtown Carrie's Fountain and how, how positive that is and how well-received that is, and how it's now a gathering place and a place where people go to have pictures taken. You know, I think we can, we can find something just as unique for us here in Morrisville. And so I like, you know, I don't know if it's going to be rooftop garden, but anyhow, I like that concept. And then, just two more things. Each one of these has a significant residential component, and I think that we need to incorporate significant residential as a part of the town center, however that flushes out in the end. I think that's going to be critically important. And then I like the, I like that you shared with us the... I mean, you know, we talk about downtown Carrie's Fountain and how, how positive that is and how well received that is and how it's now a, a gathering place and a place where people go to have pictures taken. You know, I think we can, we can find something just as unique for us here in Morrisville. And so I like, you know, I don't know if it's going to be rooftop garden, but anyhow, I, I like that concept. And then just two more things. The, each one of these has a significant residential component and I think that we need to incorporate significant residential as a part of the town center, however that flushes out in the end. I think that's going to be critically important. And then I like the, I like that you shared with us the investment in the Liberty Center, that it was a $400 million project and then it looked like a 10% public investment and how in time they've recouped. And as, as TJ said, you know, they're going to recoup that money pretty, pretty quickly. I think moving forward, it would be really nice to understand that for us too on the projects. And I too would like to see how much we've invested so far. I'm not, I kind of disagree with Councilmember Schlink. I'm not sure we've invested 40 million dollars to this point. Will we in the end? I don't know, but I, I kind of question that. So I think maybe we need to get a recap of how much we have invested because we have invested infrastructure in this area. So I think we need to get an update on that. And that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Caramello, please. Mr. Caramello would like to use the Elmo.
So yesterday night when I was. All right, can you hear me? Okay. Yesterday night I was making a chart like this, similar to it, like the components, you know, the town wise, you know, how much acreage, you know, like Suwannee has 63, Liberty has 65, Biltmore has 42. What is that we have? You know, we know we have only 10. How much are we thinking to get 20 or 30? And then the population, like comparison, 11,000, 38,000, 70, and we are 30,000. And the retail is what is interesting. 100, 660, 283 is just retail and offices. Town homes is 147 in Suwannee, like it's low density, as he said, like 85, single family, no apartments. Liberty has 240 apartments and a 130 hotel. And the same, Biltmore has 120 and 156 town homes and YMC of 65,000 capacity. So for us, what is the puzzle? You know, I, I go at a reverse way. Now, what are we looking at? How much retail? How much office? And what is a blend that we can all agree together? Because that is the key factor where can we get that high retail in this area? Can we get that high offices in this area? And what is a blend of residential? Because that is what I'm looking today for a discussion because we are just going in circles till we do this zigzag puzzle here. You know, it is very difficult. And investments, I think, 40,000, 40 million, I think he is assuming, including the library could be. You know, we have 5 million, I remember the last figure that was put in infrastructure. And I don't know the cost of the land. And then the other things, if you had to acquire more and parking deck 10, gathering place 10. So the numbers slowly start. So that is for me to basically look at this whole picture. Those examples are great, but what are our, these numbers to make it really work? So that's my analysis on that.
I'd like to recognize Mayor Portemus Grogan Johnson now, if she'd like to add a few thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think I can do a piece of analysis, you know, as well. But I, I do like the examples. I think we need to incorporate something iconic like Councilmember Johnson mentioned. And we need to get that some thought. Now, we do know that there are stormwater challenges in that particular area. A fountain, you know, Carrie's Fountain, but there might be some sort of opportunity to turn something that's a challenge into a feature of. The town green has always been at the top of my list for a gathering space. How that is incorporated and where that is incorporated, I think that has to have some discussion. I, I like the idea of having a town hall or a municipal anchor in addition to the library because that gives that balance of, you know, public-private partnerships. And of course, there has to be some residential component. I'm not sure it has to be the five stories, but it could be, you know, a smaller footprint. But we do need a mix of residential and commercial spaces in order for it to be a vibrant place. I am concerned also about the smallest footprint of our downtown versus these examples because we do have like a half or sometimes a third of what these other areas are. So how, how do we, how do we manage that? You know, how do we set expectations for success? You know, I struggle with that a bit. But I really do appreciate the examples, thank you.
Okay, I guess I had a bit of a question. You guys did a really in-depth market analysis in the intro. This is years ago. How much do we have to revisit that? Or do we still feel comfortable that there's like, how many millions of retail still desired in our area? I think you called it leakage or something?
That, that market analysis was done in 2015 as part of the town center core planning process or early 2016, I believe, is when the numbers were, were pulled from Esri Business Analyst. Market analysis numbers, especially in a community that is growing as fast as Morrisville is growing and has changed as much in the last two years, would probably need to be updated to reflect the actual supply and demand calculations for office, retail and residential at this point. What we're seeing in the triangle is still that there is a significant demand for multifamily housing is what we're seeing in terms of the development that's going on. Whether the, the number for retail of, I believe, the original town center plan that was put in place for the full vision had over 200,000 square feet of ground floor commercial space with approximately 200,000 square feet of office space. Whether those still match the market demands, to be determined, but I feel confident in those, particularly since the town center core wasn't going to be built in one phase. It's a multi-phase development. It's always been envisioned as a master plan over multiple phases to realize the market demand over time. And something worth noting is how Armaud Hoffer approached it and how we've also approached it is, you can put together a vision today that reflects the market realities and put together development, put, put out there, develop a full vision, but you need to provide yourself enough flexibility within that plan to react to the market realities. Say the office or the retail just isn't thriving in 10 years like it was today. How can those sites and those developments be, can shift to, say, a higher residential demand or a office demand? So, you know, banks and institutions, when they lend for these types of projects, they need a market analysis that has been completed within three or six months. So a two-year-old won't be accurate, accurately reflecting what the current conditions are. But, you know, from our analysis and from other communities we've worked with in the triangle, there still is that significant demand for all those uses.
Two, that House Levine actually did that as part of their sub-area study. We can provide you that information.
So we do have recent data for that because I was, when Councilmember Caramello was talking about, how much of this puzzle do we have to set forth and how much? Because I guess we're moving towards a new RFP. So we can sort of say this is ideally what we'd like to see, but we have to provide the flexibility to see what they come back with. Is that kind of accurate?
And I appreciate the table that Councilmember Caramello put together. I think the concern is you can't necessarily hone in on those numbers right off the bat. I think you can have a market analysis that provides you, and market analysis is a, you know, it's a forward-looking picture based on today's trends and, and looking backwards to see how growth has occurred in the past five years to project forward over a period of five years for, you know, it's a sort of an art and science with market analysis to determine really sort of the potential capture rate. You know, the point of the public-private partnership and having the private developers, they can inform you of what the, what they believe the market is. I think the box that needs to be figured out with, with you all is, what are the public facilities and those anchor institutions and those, those town greens going to look like? The community centers so that essentially you dictate what the town center will look like in terms of those public facilities. And then the public development based on market realities will build and, in a very complimentary way to those public anchor greens or community centers or town halls that have the large public space out front. So I think it's, the opportunity here is to, you know, sort of dictate and, and control those public facilities within the town green and then let the, based on market realities, let the private development be, develop in a very complimentary way to those public facilities.
And I like how we're sort of taking this slowly in chunks and we're going to affirm as we go so we don't get ahead of ourselves. I think Councilmember Caramello wanted to follow up and then Councilmember Schlink had something?
Eric, the reason I put this chart together was not to boxen into any of these things, but to, from last three or four sessions that we had, you know, it was all about the residential component. I don't think anyone in our council disputed about town greens or those kind of areas. But it was more about for me to even get an understanding, are we going with four parking decks? Are we going with two parking decks? What are we looking at overall? Because we were so boxed into just the, what is the, the four? No, no. Demonstration project. We are so boxed into demonstration, we kind of lost sight of the overall. So that's the reason I was asking early on, you know, what is, when we go back and see, what is the, the big picture of the downtown that was envisioned? That we are pretty much kind of, I personally have lost track of it because we were so boxed into the demonstration project. So that was the reason is how does this whole area fit in? And then how much space is left? You know, because it's all math here, you know, the acreage is a problem. We can't increase more as much as these areas were. So how do you go around that? And of that, I think library is taking two acres or one acre, right? Like of, of that land. So the, part of the demonstration, if I'm correct.
Building itself is less than an acre.
Yeah, but the parking, yeah, so, so that is gone. So now we have the other ones to play. It's pretty much like a zigzag puzzle, not in the way to say more residential this one, but what do we want? Because you see very clearly, Suwannee parking, Suwannee did not have any apartments, period. And they do not have any parking decks because they're 63 acres. We are not that. And a residential component has to be heavy. So what is that blend? And from there, that determines the retail component, you know, like hundreds of thousands of retail and office. It's, for me, I look at it purely as a, how can we accommodate all together as an overall picture? Not just boxed into it.
Councilmember Schlink, please.
I guess for me, I know in the, when we discussed in the past, we've talked about Grace Park and Park West Village. So maybe those are two that we could look at, I mean, to get a better picture. But again, they're having troubles. We, we hear about it. They rotate in and out, retail, what they can do, foot traffic, they want more. I just bring that up, but I think the component too, I'd like to see in our downtown would be affordable housing. I mean, from the aspect of, I'm more of a let somebody have a, or work with a, a company that would put maybe 100 units down here. There are companies in this area that have done that. So I think that would be what I could see doing too. I just throw that, thought of that, throw it out. I'm sorry, back to your kind of, how much does Grace Park have as commercial and retail, residential? Because that looks like more of the size we're looking at.
So that sounds like something if, was it comparable, if possible, and that's really local. Councilmember Rao, and then maybe we can pass it back to Todd, who can sort of take us through the three different areas so we can move forward.
I want to follow up on a, a good point Councilmember Caramello made. I think it really, for me, was helpful to see the visual. But I think what you're trying to say also, and I share your sentiment, I think the last few years, we've been sort of, I think we've come a long way in terms of working with you all to figure out what kind of a town center we want. But I think a lot of times it also, what, what's going to be important is in this decision that we make is the market dynamics of living in the triangle. And I, I think that if you do another RFP, my concern is it's going to come back and it's going to say, you have to, you know, I don't think any developer that I know of and around this area is going to build a town center without high density. They're just not going to do it because they don't have the rooftops. And so if that's the case, I think the council has to then decide, okay, the reality is, would we get the kind of investment to build single-family townhomes? And that's just not, I mean, Mayor Colley and I, we, we went to the, the Smart Growth Committee that we work on together. And remember during the presentations, a lot of the talk is about multifamily, multifamily. So that's a reality that we're never going to be able to escape. So I think that that's an important criteria because if that, if it comes down that, like Councilmember Caramella, when he put up all those factors, okay, if we can't get the kind of residential we want, then what can we do with the land we have to do a demonstration project? I would rather start something, whether it's, you know, let's say we, we go through the RFP process and it doesn't make sense, you know, something, starting with a public recreation center or something to, to get something going. Because I feel like, I feel like we're right, I mean, my, it's just my opinion. Councilmember Johnson's been doing this a little longer than any of us, but I feel like we're, we're running around like this and we've got to sort of, just like running a race, we've got to say, okay, what mile marker are we at? How are we going to get to the next mile marker, which is beginning something? And so those are just some of my observations, but I think the council has to make a decision. Maybe it's going through the process again, seeing if there's an opportunity for a Suwannee-type model maybe, you know, something where there's less density, where we can have some of these public amenities. But we might come back a year from now or six months after we do the analysis and it's still not a reality. So that's just my only concern is I really want to see us get started with something.
Yeah, I believe DFI and staff are coming forward with the two different scenarios, the lower density option and the higher density option that they both feel would work. As we move forward, the market would support. So we'll have to see what kind of appetite the town council and the, through resident input feels will work best for us and our community. So saying that, Todd, if you could take us through kind of, I guess I call them soft decision points. You guys are looking for some, some good input, high-level feedback on three different directions that we can take.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So for these next three topics, just as a reminder, I'm going to kind of provide you some background information and the criteria of the feedback we're looking for. And again, we will provide this information to House Levine, who will incorporate that in their two build-out strategies, both the low density as well as the high density. Again, we'll talk more about that at the end of this session. So we have the next 40 minutes to discuss these three categories. Let's start out with the town green. So for the town green, what we're looking for, what is your interest? And what do you feel the needs are in terms of programming? So you can see some examples there. Are you looking for active recreation? Are you looking for events such as musical or performance? Are you looking more for passive recreation? Do you want to try to incorporate, for example, some of the opportunities identified in the Parks Recreation Master Plan such as, for example, outdoor exercise classes, movie and music in the park type events, senior programs such as some of the yard games that could be played? Youth summer camp, for example, every year our youth summer camp fills up and kids get put on a waiting list. So is this an opportunity to expand that type of programming? Notice that we're not asking tonight, what size town green do you want? Again, if you can help identify the type of programming, we're going to provide that information to House Levine and they'll come back and make the recommendation of the size green that we feel like we need. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to you.
So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to you all for discussion and we're happy to answer any questions you might have along the way.
Okay, so I see Councilmember Johnson, then Councilmember Rao, and we'll just sort of throw our ideas out there and then we can hopefully discuss pros and cons after everyone gets a chance to sort of bring it together and give staff some direction, if we can come to some kind of collation of our thoughts. So Councilmember Johnson.
So for, for many years now, we have had various Parks and Recs events in this area, you know, to, to get people acclimated to this area as a town center. We've had Spring Fest out here in the past. We've had the East Meets West Festival out here on Town Hall Drive. We've used Indian Creek Greenway. So I think those, those activities that we see and we plan now should be incorporated into this town green. And I, I, can I, just, can you elaborate on this one bullet though? Todd, the Parks and Recs Master Plan programs in Morseville that are currently underserved?
After, I don't think underserved was the best word I could have used. It's really, I know, and I apologize for that. After reading that, I realized I should have used more like opportunities. And I listed some of those, again, senior programs such as yard games or even senior picnics, youth summer camp, you know, outdoor exercise classes, events like we hold, or you just said, movie and music in the park. Yeah, do you want it to be passive recreation? Do you want it to be active recreation where you have organized sports? Basketball, yep.
Okay, thank, thank you, because that didn't, that bullet did not match what you said. So I liked everything you said, yes, we want to incorporate all that. I think, you know, back to my other comments when we looked at the three examples, I think we need a town green that is an active space that we can program events. I mean, we don't have to program 24 hours a day, seven days a week, but that, I, I think that's going to be our town gathering place. And then also, it could be used for folks to just walk around. And when they come to the library and then they want to have a picnic or they want, you know, it can be, it can be everything, active, passive, I think, I think, and every, everything you said about having the camps there and senior activities and I think all of that would be perfect in this location. Is that what you're looking for?
And it is exactly it. And you mentioned this in your first comment, so let me go ahead and throw this out here too as well. Location is another item we want feedback on, so if you'll go to the next slide, Eric, there on location. You know, would you prefer the town green to be closer to Town Hall Drive? Would you prefer it to be more in the center of the town center project? Or would you prefer it to be, you know, east in proximity to where the Wetland Education Center that we've referenced before, along Church Street?
If you want to share your thoughts on that, otherwise we'll circle back to you.
Well, I, I looked at this and I gave this a little bit of thought. I think, I think if we want to make retail successful, I think that needs to be closer to Town Hall Drive. And you would tell me, you, you're the expert here, Eric, but I'm thinking that needs to be closer. I, I would, I would think right in the heart of the town center would, would work. I think that's kind of where I'm leaning right now. Not to, to your point though, I think we do need to be very flexible moving forward. And if, and if some fabulous developer came in with some fabulous plan, you know, we need to be flexible to shift a little bit. And I, I, I would, I would commit to that. But looking at these three options right now, I'd just say the heart of the town center.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Rao, and then Councilmember Garamella.
When you used the word underserved, I was assuming that you meant, you know, opportunities. So I just think, I just reiterate that, you know, more festivals, more, we talked about in a previous roundtable item, I talked about, we gave a directive to staff to look at, you know, different kinds of cultural programs we can do, celebrating our diversity, different kinds of things like that, with all the different groups that we have in Morseville, ethnic groups. And I think a, a town center green, I think, should really, really serve that purpose. As I go out there and talk to citizens of Morseville, I think that's what they really, really enjoy, is the festivals, the chances of coming together, even the farmer's market now becoming a place where people can just get together on Saturday morning, interact, talk, really building that sense of community. And so I, I think the second point is, and I think Councilmember Johnson pretty much said it, is closer to the town center, you know, or Town Hall Drive, either way. That way people, it's close to, you know, it's walkable, people can go there, participate in the festivals. We see this with Spring Fest, one of our marquee festivals, people just walking over from where they live, you know, using the greenways. So I'm not saying anything we haven't discussed before, but those are my thoughts.
Councilmember Garamella, then Councilmember Schlink, then Mayor Protem, please.
I was looking, I was cheating by looking at the next slide here about the community facility. But most of the stuff that you're talking, Todd, is like master programming with the recreations for senior citizens. That's not a town green, really speaking, you know, like, like programs for the kids. I'm looking like, you're talking more in terms of the community center where those kind of programmings can go. So the two different things that are rolling through me, like, you know, town green is one side of it, open space versus, you know, a Morseville community center style, you know, facility, which has different purposes, different programming that we are trying to do. Can we get both at the same place? Again, it's a space. That's where it's going into my thought process. Or as much as I love town green, should we focus at Church Street because we are getting the additional with the T O E, that area and focus this area for community, you know, like a big performance hall or something like that? So which ones, you know, like, we can go in circles, but the space is the constraint that is going to decide with the higher residential component we are talking about and then having both these factors together.
Councilmember Garamella, you make a good point and I struggle with those very things, putting this information together because it's kind of hard to have a conversation about the town green without talking about community facilities. So for example, in the community facility slide, one of the questions is, do you want the, a community facility to co-locate with the town green or do you want it to be stand alone? And so some of the advantages, as you pointed out, is if, if you want events to be held in your town green, you could use a co-located facility as, as a, as electricity supply. You could incorporate restrooms that could be accessed when the community facility is closed. So there are some advantages to co-locating those two facilities. So, and it's okay if we tie your feedback all into one discussion, but we do have that on the list for the next topic, but.
And Councilmember Garamella, do you identify which of the three regions on Town Hall Drive, on Church Street, or towards the middle that you would prefer?
Personally, personally, the town, on Town Hall Drive and heart of town center is pretty much our prime real estate. If it is town green, I would personally push it to the east of Church Street because if it's a green, anyone will go. That basically, that piece of land, I think, is more like where the conservatory has looked into the past, that can do deal purpose, like making the heart of the downtown, taking green space. I, I don't think it's the best use of land, even though it's good to have, but at least if a big company or green spaces there, then east of Church Street.
Good, I hadn't thought of it that way, so thanks for sharing that. Councilmember Schlink, and then Mayor Protem.
Well, I guess, again, I appreciate everything you're doing and helping with this, but I think, to me, it all boils down to we have a lot of demands we need to focus on and I agree with everything you're doing, how you're linking things. I like the idea that where we put the town green is probably going to be next to something we want to do, a public facility. And then that's going to compete with, you know, a new town hall, a new, two new fire departments. I just don't see where we're fitting all this in the budget. So I guess where I'm back to Councilmember Rao, and I have been around a long time on the council and, and we've seen things, you know, talked about, but maybe what helped me is just something that would, kind of like the library. We got the library started, we're doing road improvements in Morseville. What would be the next step? Not a big picture, but is it putting in a town green? But what I think we, we're back to square one is, all these events that we have downtown, what would people tell you is the biggest problem? No parking. So I think we've got to start back to parking, I'm sorry. And then wherever you put this town green, that's fine, but it's going to need parking. What does our staff tell us? How much parking you're going to need if you want to have a venue for a thousand people? Okay, you're going to have to have 500 cars? Stuff like that, to me, but I'd rather, this whole process, I think I'd rather see something coming back that said, these are kind of the steps you can take and not based on steps we've already taken and have, and I think have failed for various reasons. But if the bottom line is what can the town do, that's what I'm looking at. That's why I'm back to parking and maybe affordable housing down here in the land we own and, and, and look at other areas of town where we need to focus our resources also.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlink. Mayor Protem, Scroggins, Johnson, you have some thoughts?
Yes, I would agree with Councilmember Schlink. The question is, how much money do you get across and where can you use your resources? If you have a town green, where would you put it? What, how would you program it? And a town green to me, we've been trying to find a way to have a central gathering place where that we do, physically use Town Hall Drive and increase trailhead for our gathering. So that was able to accommodate larger groups of people. So a town green should have the capability of carrying events as well as having, you know, non-purpose. So it would need to be, I, several acres, I would hope, now. What can we, where can we put it? Right now, we do still have a decreased trailhead, we have the library, and we have the farmer's market. So that is all in that common location, not directly across like it, we still close the street down, so then I was thinking the green could be a little bit more back to the, near Church Street, you know, the natural area, because that would offer a gathering space as well as the unique nature focused, maybe science focused, you know, kind of thing. I don't want to say that that is going to recreate the senior center. It's not going to replace the community center activities, but any other space can offer maybe something unique. And now that, I was thinking, you know, listening to Councilmember Johnson, you know, we want something unique. Maybe we can make this town green unique through the natural area that we have in that, near Church Street and, you know, be able to maximize that. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you very much. I had some thoughts. When I envision the town green, I actually envision it right in the middle so that all the retail can look out upon it and people can leave the library and hang out and picnic and then get some pizza and then play some more and things like that. So I see that being the case, that it's sort of central and probably co-located with a community center of sorts, which was in a later phase in the past discussions. And maybe have the community center at the back of it, like they do, I think it was Holly Springs, that has sort of an amphitheater attached to the building. So it's not a separate structure, but if we have some kind of stage or overhang there that could serve the, the park itself. I do not see us relocating like the 3rd of July fireworks, for example. Morseville Community Park is a good place for that. It's large, we already have those acres. But I do imagine having music in the park and things like that at this location in our town green. I do not imagine having a baseball diamond there, for example, or soccer goals. I think that it's a more pristine, open space. So I don't think we're going to have our formal sports and rec programming there, but we might if we really need that space as our programs grow, but I don't envision that at the beginning. I envision it as a place where we start and end our 5Ks. The Savani video talks and shows that, and that's a really nice visual, the idea of starting where people can gather and then ending where people can gather and stay there for as long as they want. So that's kind of how I'm imagining the town green. Not sure about the size, but it doesn't have to be our biggest, but I would like to do movies in the park there, for example, or the kind of music events. That's what I see, kind of like a bigger farmer's market. Right now, the farmer's market is a nice gathering place. I'd like it just to be larger, that we can program more than what we have there. And when Mayor Protem was talking about how we already have Indian Creek Trailhead, farmer's market, that made me also lean towards having the town green actually on Town Hall Drive, although I'm a big fan of having the retail, being able to have the traffic counts. So that's why I thought hard at town center, but if we put it on Town Hall Drive, if we close down Town Hall Drive, we have a lot of space and lots of different sub areas to, we can all congregate them. And if we use that, we can have a really big festival that way. But when we had East Meets West, we didn't even really fill it top to bottom. So I don't know if we'll ever be that big, but that would be something to, to shoot for, that eventually we can close down a whole lot of the street and have a really big festival. But then parking is a problem, as has been mentioned. So that's going to be our big trade-off, the parking and dealing with that. So those are my thoughts on the town green area. Did anyone have final thoughts on that one before we move on to the next? Satish?
Todd, Courtney, who owns the land in between the walking trail and Town Hall? South of where the Indian Trail is, do you see that piece of land? I know like the Veterans Memorial, yes, 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 that whole area. Who, who owns that land? Because that's a.
So the town is working with Stottlemyre family to swap land in that area. The area you're talking, to become the owner of, that's a little north of there that, that they would get.
And there, so I don't know. That area could also be used for some kind of a programming, but that's good.
Well, a good portion of that would be for the regional stormwater for the town center government.
Okay, all right, then, there it is.
Yeah, and just above the red there, that's where we have the farmer's market now, next to that parking lot. So those, that forested area is no longer forested either, just to clarify. Okay. Do the staff hear what they needed to hear, sort of high-level guidance on that?
Yes, this information is very helpful, thank you. Okay, now let's talk about community facilities. We'll get started with your feedback with, again, the preferred programming in a facility. Are you looking somewhere we can hold active recreation? Are you looking somewhere where we can hold events such as performing arts? Do you want somewhere where we can rent to the public, very similar to what Canopus does with their meeting space? Somewhere we can hold, for example, annual chamber of commerce meeting, small conferences, or again, senior citizen programs? And again, part of this feedback is your preferred location. Do you want to co-locate, for example, with a town green or do you want it to stand alone?
We started down on the left last time, Councilmember Schlink.
And if I can just offer, I'm sorry, just another component of that, in, in addition to co-locate, I'd offer multipurpose so that the same space could be used for different things. So, so that's a nuance of a co-locate, where they might be side by side, but, that you could use the same type of space for a variety of things.
It's a very flexible center. Okay. Looking to see who would like to share their thoughts first. I can go, and then we'll have Councilmember Johnson. So I sort of already touched on this a little bit, talking about the town green. I envision a facility on the border of the town green and kind of like the Herb Young Center in Cary, but with two full-size basketball carts, and this is really getting down in the weeds. But that could be used in, for multiple purposes, like volleyball, badminton, or even dances, multi-use in general. Also have some classroom-sized rooms that can be subdivided as necessary, like the Cary Senior Center. Cary has a lot of great facilities and they are very flexible in their use. That one also includes a kitchen, which would be nice for catering. I honestly don't see this as being a place to have that. I honestly don't see this as being a place to have that Chamber of Commerce events or convention-type events, kind of like Cannapolis is able to do. I don't see that as a direction that's the best use of our space, because they're already starting to outgrow major Briar Creek and stuff. So, that's getting pretty big. One portion of the building, I was thinking, could be sort of an adult-only seniors area and other area more child and teen-friendly, so you can, in the same building, serve multiple needs and have them kind of separate enough that you feel like you have a senior center and you also have a teen center. I think it'd be great to have, meet multiple needs with the same building. And that's generally my thoughts. One thing I did want to touch on, the Town Green, it would be great to have some kind of water amenity or splash pad, which seems to be very attractive, and we can use that many months out of the year. And that would really bring the families out, and I think that would be really helpful for our town to have something like that. That would be really engaging, and that could be part of our iconic draw. That's what I have for now. If I think of anything else, we'll circle back. But Councilmember Johnson, would you like to go next?
So, I too would like to see this close to the Town Green. I think they could definitely play off each other. I do think we need to have a facility that we can rent to the public. There is a great need for event space here in town. You know, maybe not an event that will hold 1,000 people. I don't, we don't need, need something that big, but some kind of event space where folks can rent for their HOA meetings, for even weddings, for retirement parties, you know. We don't have anything like that here, and it's really, well, I take that back. There are, there are, there's, there's nothing at a affordable price. I think what we could do is offer something that's a little more affordable to the public. So, but having said that, I don't know how you, how you design a facility like that, that holds events like that, and then is also used for active recreation at the same time. So, you know, I know we need gym space and we need basketball courts. I don't know how you turn a basketball court into a venue that people would hold a retirement party or a wedding in. And maybe that is out there somewhere, but, and if it is, I'd like to see it, because that's exactly what I would like. But anyhow, so I think somehow incorporating a community facility in the Town Green would be, would be wonderful, and I do think a performing arts center, you know, what, what, you know, a multi-use facility that can accommodate all of this, all that we can't even imagine today, that we're going to want as the community grows too.
Would Mayor Protemus Croggins-Johnson like to add her thoughts?
So, I really have enjoyed visiting Town Green with their library that has a small performance center, but that's one example of having a flexible space that could offer different kind of venues. That space has hosted concerts, it's hosted speaking, you know, events, it's hosted gatherings and so forth. So, we need some municipal, multipurpose, multi-use space. It could be a stage, it could be, you know, just an open space, but we definitely need something that's rental, like Councilmember Johnson said. But I would say that we should consider maybe, you know, more performance oriented venues as well.
Okay. Councilmember Garamella, would you like to share thoughts next?
Personally, I really don't care about the location, because it has to be more market-driven, how the whole Town Green and the standalone facilities, because if someone wanted to put somewhere here, so for us, if you're trying to do it, wherever we put, our people will come there. So, it's kind of, the anchor will be there. So, more preference, I would give it to the people who are building, for getting their businesses run and their big bucks, you know, which are private investment.
Okay, that's a way to look at it, too. Councilmember Rowe?
Points have already been made. I mean, I, I think that, you know, we clearly have a lack of community space, and a lot of times, folks have to go to Cary, Herb Young, the amphitheater in Bond Park is another type of place where lots of events happen. So, I just think the challenge is the active recreation versus, you know, combining it with a place where you could do arts, music, music festivals, dance programs, these kinds of things. So, maybe combining both of those needs. And I guess the preferred location to me would be something near the Town Green, so people could gather before a performance, and then they could gather after a performance. So, having it close to a place where folks gather, you know, those are the only things that I would add in addition to, you know, everything that's been said so far.
I think the staff have some feedback. Very good. Okay, so if we want to move on to the third topic?
Okay, now we'll talk about town office space needs, and let's start with just a recap of space needs assessment that is really underway, but I could provide you some preliminary information that will, could help you with your discussion tonight. So, in terms of existing needs, if we look, if we, for example, would like to put the Parks and Recreation Administrative Department in a town-owned facility, they're currently leasing out about 4,000 square feet, but they would, they need to be in about 5,000 square feet. So, that, that's existing needs right now, today. Looking at a five-year staffing projection, our consultant has identified that over the next five years, we would need an additional 6,000 square feet. So, in round numbers, between existing space and future needs over the next five years, we would need a little over 11,000 square feet. So, the question is, how do we accommodate this space need? And so, we could take the new standalone building. Now, let me give you two scenarios, again, just for discussion purposes. You may feel, for example, that it's important that every town department be in the same building, much like Cannapolis. So, if you took that approach, for one, we would recommend that we do a 10-year staffing study and not a five-year. But today, we would need a, a building that would be in the range of 50,000 square feet. And so, that's more than five times the Town Hall building now, including the council chambers. Another, a way you could approach that, and we've just kicked this idea around at staff level, we could relocate the police department and the fire administration into new space. And they would need about 12,000 square feet for existing and near-future needs, that's a five-year period. That's about, that's a little bit smaller than Fire Station Number One, when you're doing a comparison. But then the space they vacate would be large enough to accommodate the town's growth over the next five years. So, again, one approach could be a new standalone building, and I've provided two scenarios for discussion purposes. Another option, you could say, well, we would like to add on to existing buildings, and that would be another option. Or maybe you're happy with the lease approach, and we continue leasing for a longer term. Right now, we have a three-year lease with Southport to accommodate the Parks and Rec's admin building. So, with that information, alternative for your discussion?
Just quick, repeat what you said about the police and fire.
So, one scenario is, we could move the police department and the fire administration offices, which are currently housed in the Public Safety Municipal Service Building. They could go into a new standalone building, for example, and then that space they vacate is enough space that accommodate the town's growth for over the next five years. Now, we'd have to, you know, retrofit, outfit it to accommodate offices and so forth. But that's one way you could accommodate the town office space needs for the next five years.
What was this combined square footage of those two?
So, the police, if they moved out, they would need about 12,000 square feet for now and over the next five years, and that's a little bit smaller than Fire Station One counting the bays. Fire Station One, I think, is about 13,000 square feet.
So, I see Councilmember Rowe, and then Councilmember Garamella? Councilmember Garamella?
We are building the public works, too, right? My thought process is, are we looking into expanding that to have some space, or we're building a fire station, too? You know, like, that's the plan, two fire stations. Does it, can we add space on that? Or can we add go-vertical right here? Because space is pretty much becoming a constraint, our lease, till we figure this out ongoing, because either go-vertical on this place or the police station area, one of the two is the only way. We can't go horizontal anymore in this area.
Yeah, so, you know, you said a lot there, but the current public works project does not include expanding for other town office needs. We are partnering with Wake County for that, to try to expand the convenience center, but currently, we're designing the public works to accommodate the public work staff.
What if we just put an extra floor or space? Because that would be an easy one to add on.
The challenge, it is that, right now, it's proposed to be a two-story building, but the challenge with additional stories is the needed parking, which takes up space, which we're challenged with now to try to get public works as well as the convenience center project to work. So, parking would be the issue for that scenario.
If, if I may try to add on a little bit. So, as we've added staff over the last couple of years, we've added very small and incremental numbers of staff. And when they're not really police officers or fire officers, we need a place for them as well. And so, over the last several years, as you're probably aware, in order to do that, we've had to modify our current buildings to try to find suitable workspace for people that are in our buildings. Last year, we were unable to do that without relocating an entire department outside of our town proper. So, what we're trying to recognize here is, is we continue to forecast some additional staffing needs, and so just as we've evaluated options, and Todd's mentioned them to you, we could move departments out of this town area, our town buildings, and find suitable space for them. There's a whole bunch of decisions that you have to make. There's some departments that really integrally work together every day, and moving them outside would cause other kind of workload challenges. So, so, but there's that option. Yes, you can always add on to what you have. I have an opinion about that. That's probably your least effective and most costly way, especially with the buildings that we have, in order to do that. So, your option is, is to build or, or do some other combinations. So, as we've evaluated what we've heard from our staff, and what you've actually heard from your staff, both police and fire feel that their administrative needs are not being met effectively in the space that they're at. So, part of the space study money that we're using in this year's budget was to evaluate those needs. And those needs in particular are just beyond their personnel, evidence and storage and ammunition and fire safety equipment. So, there's a whole host of unique things that also have to be considered for the public safety departments, that make their needs a little bit different than just other staff. So, we are evaluating what that component of operation is, and it could be part of discussions about future fire stations, which we're already also having. So, if that space was vacated, it would allow us to bring a Parks and Rec back in or design space that meets some of our other staffing needs. Does that help explain it from the process that we've looked at it better? Or can Todd or I answer any additional questions? Again, it's a forecast. We haven't evaluated those future forecast needs, other than ask our department heads what they feel they might need to serve the community, but that hasn't happened as a full-scale evaluation or request that's coming to you in future years. We're dealing with the current year, that you'll see very shortly.
Done. I would go with the lease option then, because still we get something solidified, because we, right now, don't have those kind of things, and it can still help us with our needs, but at the same time, we are not investing and locked down into an area, because the whole downtown, all the discussions still ongoing.
Councilmember Schlink, please.
Yeah, that's good information, and I think what helped me to visualize it is a building that size, how many parking spaces, how big. Again, we have a limited amount of land we own downtown. And how does, how would that impact, then, everything else we just talked about?
Yeah, I would, I'm very concerned about our lack of usable land in the downtown, and I know we do have a need for municipal staffing space. I don't think that's a real synergy and best use of the downtown space. So, I would prefer to lease somewhere else. And I, the idea of moving police and fire together somewhere, if we can find a large enough space, and whatever synergies are needed to stay in this area, keep them here. But Parks and Rec was able to move out and not be co-located. If there's any other departments that are kind of more standalone-ish, I'm not sure what those might be. But I would prefer to keep the Town Center on things that really build synergy around making a community gathering place. Like, if anything, I'd put Parks and Rec down there. If anything, or maybe a small police substation like they used to do at the factory shops, or we did. I guess that was Marsfield back then, it's been so long. So, those are my thoughts about that. I'd prefer leasing than dedicating space that I don't think will draw people to downtown. Any other councilmembers? Councilmember Johnson, please.
So, I don't, I don't, I don't really have, I don't think I have enough of information to tell you what, what option here is best. I think you need to give, I feel like you need to give me more information. And so, this idea of needing this 11,000 square feet, you know, you know, the 5,000 for Parks and Recs, and then another 6,000, are you telling me we need that, like, tomorrow?
We need it over the next five years to accommodate the projected growth of staff. 5,000, that is today, if you wanted to put Parks and Rec admin in a town-owned building, we need that today, and then additional 6,000 over the next five years.
So, and you did say that, I apologize, you did say five years. So, I don't, I don't know what's the best option. You know, financially, I don't, I, I, you need to tell me. I kind of agree with TJ. I would, I think the, the town center land could be put to some better use. I think we could have some mixed-use community center that, that we can use for all kinds of uses. I keep saying the word "use," but I think that's okay, but to, I think we should figure out a way to maximize the land we have right here in this vicinity. And I, I would like to know why we can't build up on a, you know, maybe not this building, but we have the, the building that HR is in now, that Parks and Rec used to be in. You know, what if that was added on to? And I hear your parking issue, I hear that, and you know, so maybe that's, the parking deck helps in some ways with the parking, but, you know, there, I'd like to understand better how we maximize this land that we have right here.
And so, that's, that's the kind of feedback we need, so we can... And so, that's, that's the kind of feedback we need, so we can further explore and research and come back with numbers for you. So, that's exactly the kind of feedback we need. And the parking issue was related to the Public Works project, where we're trying to do a joint project with Wake County on the convenience center.
So, can I ask you another question? So, what, like, to just, this is just off the wall, throw it out there. What if we decided to build a new town hall building somewhere? You know, what, what would happen to this building? Is this building, could this be sold? What, what could its future use be? Could we, you know, maximize this property in a better way then? I mean, I'd like to understand, that's not an option you all talked about. So, I'd like to understand that, too. There are a lot more options.
I think we'd all agree that this is a prime piece of real estate.
Agreed. That's why I asked the question.
But I, I echo what, what Todd says. You're giving us the information to bring you back more information. So, that's, that's part of the, the next steps that we're talking about. You know, looking into the feasibility of adding on to one or more of the buildings, just what sort of the sequencing of options are. That helps us know what steps there are. A lot of this conversation, I think, was driven with the, the appeal that people saw in the Kannapolis Town Hall being a centerpiece of the downtown development. So, I, I think that has stimulated a lot of conversation, because it served multiple purposes, including that meeting facility. So, I think that's why we're trying to pull apart what council's really interested in. And I think what's going to end up coming back is, you're still going to have to prioritize. So, I'll sort of prep you. You can't get everything and have it be a project that's going to fit in our parcel of land. So, we are going to end up prioritizing. And I think we're trying to get that a little bit more defined for you, so that you, that's a tough step to do. So, we are trying to get that defined for you better. Would that be accurate?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Yeah, when I think of the size of that Kannapolis building, I think that's our entire town center. I mean, it seemed so big that it would take up the whole thing. But now, we're going to hear from Mayor Portman, Mr. Cargans, Johnson, and then Councilmember Garamela had another thought.
Thank you, Mayor. When I'm thinking about future needs for staff and the town and so forth, I keep thinking that we need to go off, we need to go off from a multi-story building, three-story, and we need to sign multiple purposes. So, if we use our existing land, like the Parks and Rec building, and went up three stories, what's our capacity be for administration? If we wanted to have a community center building, could we cut in some offices there for staffing? But the, the city's challenge is really, what I'm hearing as an urgent need, is our police and fire need to have appropriate facilities for their business needs. And we are quickly outgrowing that. So, how do we do that? I just think we need a, a new building that's going to accommodate some of that, that is programmed in. Because we're only six, four miles, and we're built, going to build that, we should be able to anticipate, you know, the projected size of staffing, what it might be in the future, and the plans they're building like that. The problem I see is that we're already planning for the Public Works, you know, expansion and modification with Wake County. And then how do we afford two big capital projects at the same time that are municipal? So, I agree, we need to have more space. I'd like to see multiple-story buildings, but how do we sequence it in a way that we can still fund it, given the town authority that we need it?
Thank you, Mayor Portman. Thank you. Councilmember Garamela?
One example I have seen, like, Towne O'Carroll has Parks and Recs, like, pretty much a small shop they have taken and converted into an office at Amberly. And that gets a good foot traffic. So, if we can have, you know, like, every time we are, like, concentrating colocation, colocation, but certain departments are also important to have a face to the public, you know, like, where, like, suppose a shopping complex at Walmart, or Harris Teeter, where there's our park west, for example, where there's so much of foot traffic, you have, you know, something, hey, you know, I can go to the town there and talk to someone, you know, like, might be Parks and Recs, or some other kind of, might be the PIO, you know, one person can be there, work from there. But the idea is, it gives a lot of people a foot traffic and also ask questions and be engaged to it, instead of just, we are, like, colocation is important, but at the same time, how accessible we are to the people around the town.
Councilmember Rao?
I'm like, I, I feel that I still need more information before I can really make a decision about locating specific departments and offices. But I'm open to leasing when necessary. I think when I look at Parks and Rec, I think that was a successful move when we moved, you know, to the Southport facilities. So, to the extent there's opportunities to move departments to areas where we can lease, and at the same time, making the longer-term decisions about what we would do with this facility, would there be, you know, a place where we could incorporate more of our departments? I like what Town Manager Page said, I think, which is an important point, is that there is a lot of cross-departmental work that occurs. And so, we want to make sure that those departments are able to work in environments where they're closer together, where they can exchange information, ideas, and continue the work of the town. So, we don't want to just lease, you know, departments where we just, different departments are working in silos. So, I think that's something that, you know, I would need more information before I could make, you know, give you complete direction of, okay, move this office here, move this office there. But I think fire and police, to me, is very critical that we find an option for them, because clearly they've, you know, outgrown their needs at this point in time.
And if I may, Mayor. And that is the focus of the study and the money that we're using out of this year's budget. That was the focus of it, is police and fire. We just recognize that some of those recommendations, options, decisions may help address some of those other things that we, that we know are coming. So, we're looking at it at a very holistic approach.
Okay. I think we've heard from everyone who wanted to speak. So, does staff have what they need on those three topics?
Yes, sir, we do. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anything else wrapping up? Or when do we hear from you guys again? What's next steps?
Yes, a couple more things. Let me just finish up by reviewing transportation projects and pedestrian projects. And let's start with transportation projects that are planned for over the next six years. One of the interests and concerns you've mentioned is having mobile access to and from the town center. So, Eric, I don't know if you can see that map good enough to point out, but let's start at the town center itself, the traffic circle. Obviously, we're creating the first block of the town center with the traffic circle, the extension of Carolina Street widening that, the connection of Fox Club from Jeremiah Street to Carolina Street. So, that first block, first block is being constructed now, scheduled to be complete in the next couple of months. Moving to the south there, as you know, we're going to start this summer widening Marshville Carpenter Road from Davis Drive to Highway 54. Part of that improvement at Town Hall intersection will be two left turn lanes. So, we think that'll be helpful. Then, moving east, when you get to Church Street, that'll be right in and right out, and so will Page Street, right in and right out. Continuing east down Aviation, as you know, DOT is planning to widen Aviation from Highway 54 to I-40, and that includes ramp improvements from two lanes to four lanes, just like Marshville Carpenter Road is planned, from two lanes to four lane. And as you know, that Marshville, McCrimmon Parkway now, both Phase One and Phase Two, is under construction, with plans to be complete by the end of the year. Also, on the heels of that, will be a McCrimmon Overpass. And so, again, these are projects that are all planned over the next six years that we think will help with mobility to and from town center. The next slide there is pedestrian accessibility. Again, Eric, I don't know if you can see the slide good enough, but to the north there, a future side path is planned as part of the Airport Boulevard Extension. To the, to the west there is an existing Indian Creek Greenway. To the south of town center is the existing Hatcher Creek Greenway. And then, to the east, there's a future Sawmill Creek Greenway. These are all, these two, you know, the north and the east are planned. And so, I think it'll be very easy to accommodate pedestrian accessibility through the town center project. I know you recently have been shown concepts of a pathway going through the town center. So, staff feels like that's going to be very easy to accomplish. So, I just wanted to share that with you. And in the last slide there, next steps, again, all the feedback you gave tonight, which has been very helpful, is going to be incorporated into the House Levine build-out strategies for both the low-density and high-density. They will provide that information to you later this summer. You know, the, the strategies will also include for the low-density, for example, the surface parking needed, and for the high-density, the structured parking needed to accommodate that. And once House Levine provides that information, the town is going to conduct TIA studies for both the low-density and the high-density build-out strategies. And again, we'll bring that information back to you. And as has been mentioned before, we're hopeful this additional information can help you make some decisions, so we can move forward and reconsider another RFP for the development of the town center.
Okay. And one thing that you just triggered in my mind, I meant to mention also that when you think about town facilities, we talked about the library, which has happened, some kind of community center. I think a lot of us would hope to see something like that. I think we also need to throw in parking deck, because that was the real stumbling block last time. So, if we're thinking about high-density, we need to think that we might have to be the people funding that. And that's an important decision point for us, whether or not that's something that we can do with all the other needs that we have, especially things like new fire stations, which I think take a higher priority. So, we just need to really identify and be ready to decide. If it's a priority to make a town center that's going to be active and vibrant, we may need to pony up to pay for that parking deck. And that was the sticking point the last time. I think Councilmember Schlink mentioned, where did we not succeed last time? And I think, I think that was it, right there. I think we were close. But then, when we lost the ability to not fund that, I think that set us back. So, I think we need to sort of be ready this time, and more prepared to take that gut check and see how important it is to move forward. Did anyone else have any other thoughts on the town center before we move on to the next discussion item? Okay. Thank you very much, Eric, for all your hard work, patience with us. Todd and staff, thank you all very much.
Oh, sorry, I did, I'm sorry.
Okay. Then, Councilmember Schlink, please add.
I think one thing we need to consider, too, is the option on the table at some point in the next six years, because you're bringing up six years. We're going to have to make a determination about a great separation at Aviation and Morrisville Carpenter. That impacts a concept for a town, town, a town center, and everything else we're trying to accomplish.
Looks like Councilmember Rao has another thought?
Todd, I, I look forward to continuing working on this. I do want to thank you for the, for the updates on the transportation projects. And for the citizens listening tonight, I know a lot of times, there's noise being made about the lack of mobility around this area, which I think sometimes hinders our productive conversations at the town center. So, I really hope that we can work with, and I know we are with our transportation newsletter, but working with Kathy Jarboe and her team to make sure that we're letting every citizen in Morrisville know the number of things that we are doing for mobility, road projects, pedestrian, and, and, and I think also that the exciting discussions we've been having of transit, which we didn't really mention today, but we just had a workshop on that. And I just wanted to just say that for the public comments, for the record, because I think a lot of times, this information is not getting out there, and we needed to. So, thank you.
Okay. So, I propose that we take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 8:25 for our next discussion topic, which is continuing CIP bond referendum. So, we'll reconvene at 8:25. Thank you. 8:25, we're going to come back for discussion item 2B, continued bond referendum discussion. And I'm going to pass it over to Jeannie Hooks, Assistant to the Manager, Budget Manager at this time.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, when we last met, we talked about some project updates, some very specific project updates. And then, we talked about capital improvement plan and a potential proposal that was going to be coming forward. And I think we had a couple of projects that I just want to touch on before we jump into the bond referendum continued discussion. You had indicated a couple of project titles that have needed to be relabeled. So, I just want to check in with you on a couple of those real quick, if you'll just give me a second, and I'll roll it back to that screen. Okay? The Crabtree Crossing Connector was one of the first ones you indicated. And the other one was the Town Hall, well, it's not on this screen. Town Hall Drive Extension, potentially renaming that one also. So, for the Crabtree Crossing Connector, I believe we were suggesting maybe renaming that the Crabtree Hatcher Creek Greenway. Crabtree Crossing Greenway Connector. And we're proposing Crabtree Hatcher Creek Greenway South. Okay. So, the other one was Town Hall Drive Extension, and that one, we are looking at Church Street North Bypass as a potential option. Remember, that comes out of the backside, I believe, of Providence Place, skirts down, and connects back to McCrimmon. That seem okay? More descriptive? Okay.
So, we purpose, we did not want to change your presentation materials, because you're in the middle of your presentation, but we did want to reflect council's desire, especially for the public, to know that. So, that is included in the update part of the item, and, and then we'll make those appropriate references in the materials that are available to the public.
Jeannie, can you go one slide down? More. Yes. This one, what? Cedar Fork Elementary Field, I think it's the lights, right, we are trying to do? There was a project a long time ago we talked about. So, if you can be more specific on that, what, are there lights or?
I think it's in the book.
In the book?
So, it's in, that is a current project profile that's been updated. It's more for having a multipurpose field on that property that, that we have, expanding that use, usability of that space. You will be receiving updated project profiles in the budget and capital improvement materials that are giving, given to you on May 7th. Okay? Everybody's good. I'm going to move ahead and get us going along with the, oh, thank you, the bond referendum discussion, continuing that. Okay. So, so basically, what we're doing is, we just want to continue your opportunity for you as council to talk together of where you would like to take bond referendum process in the future. So, I'm going to give you a few reminders, a few refreshers, to at least get you started tonight. And I'll turn it over to you. And I'll turn it over to you. It's not that we're asking for something specific tonight. We just want you to have that opportunity to continue that discussion. So let me put a few things in front of you and see if that stirs your memory. So our process, the basic process tends to take about a nine-to-12-month period. So we usually have it in two phases, a preliminary phase. That's really where you're thinking about what are the priorities? What are the bond packages you want? Like, for example, public safety bond improvement package, parks and recreation improvement packages, or roadway and transportation improvement packages. Just examples. And in each one of those category package groups, you have a number of potential projects you could assign in there to be a part of that bundled package group or category. And in the preliminary phase, you also talk about, well, how do you want an outreach to the community? How, what type of engagement do you need that to be? We also engage our financial analysts, that would be more than likely Davenport and Associates, that we have a really good reputation with, who has learned to know Morrisville. We ourselves do internal analysis. And we refine cost estimates for the projects that you are interested in. Again, you need to identify what those are because we can't do all 25 CIP projects. So you have to kind of whittle that down into what your interests really are, that you want to put out to the community. And then you go into that more formal phase. It's very framed by the local government commission, timeline-oriented, and that takes you up to almost your nine-to-12-month period. So what does that do for us now? For potential bond referendum dates, because the timeline in which it works, the eligible dates for election or bond referendum would be in 2020 or the next one in 2021. So a sample timeline, this is just using the next one that's coming up, which would be 2020. This would be potentially what your timeline would look like that would incorporate what we talked about as a preliminary phase, for you to have that time to talk through what are the important projects? What major categories are you most interested in? How do you want to involve the community? Of course, staff would help you organize that and get those things together. And then move into that more formal phase. Let's go back to the timeline. So your preliminary phase starts in July 2019 and would go through June 2020. By June 2020, you would need to have your bond referendum category projects clearly identified for what you want to submit to LGC that would be on the ballots. So that's where the timeline becomes more refined, more specific and deadline-oriented because you're speaking to LGC at that time. It would go through July and be ready for a referendum in November 2020. So Martha has provided you really what might be coming forward in a budget for your capital improvement plans. The projects that she felt were important based on your input, your feedback, your adopted master plans and their influence. And I gave you a handout and it looked like this. So that's a little difficult to see. That was with the original conversation at our last meeting, okay? So the link's still active. But what we have done here is provide you with projects from the capital improvement plan and some things that we've heard you say that were important to you into what we think the potential bond categories might look like or projects you could put within those bond categories. We're not suggesting that all of them, the road improvements, would be what your bond category package would be for road improvements. We're suggesting those would be the ones that would fit in that category to give you something to work with. So these would be potential worksheets for you as individuals to decide what is important to you in those categories. And then the other ones would be sidewalks and pedestrian type projects and of course, parks and recreation improvements. Now, as Martha has provided you with that comprehensive CIP, what that might look like coming forward, she has also thrown in the ones that are coming forward where we're asking for funding or using reserve monies to get some projects ready. And two of those would be potentially Parks, Park West Fire Station, and some money for Northwest Fire Station. So those have, in terms of what you say is a prioritization and what we see as important, a one and a two. And the other ones, as you see, are to be determined, as you feel are important. Another one, for example, are the Parks and Rec projects. Again, on that draft CIP that would come forward, the top three important projects that are a part of that funding year in 20 and 2021, Morrisville Community Park Phase 3, Crabtree Nature Park, and then Cedar Fork District Park Field Improvements. And then the other ones to be determined, as you as council decide as an entity, what is important in those categories.
Sorry, we have this, this is in our last period, it's in March.
So this is not new. This is the exact same presentation that you received last time. Remember, we paused in the middle and decided to move this piece of the conversation to the 22nd. So you also have the comprehensive breakdown for the CIP that was put in front of you.
Sorry, one question. If we go back to that first one with the safety projects, because we just heard two new safety projects tonight, right? Which we could add, we could add three and four.
And you are correct, and that's actually the purpose of starting this conversation. So it's to put together a framework for you to build, add, change, all of those things. Yes, sir.
No, it's all good. So again, these could be potential worksheets that you could use individually, collectively, together, as you talk through and refine what these potential bond packages might look like, what projects would be considered under those. Because that could, that would be a part of your messaging as to how you might engage the community and get feedback, is first you deciding what needs to be in there and then putting it out there and messaging it, that these are important and why they're important.
Discussion, we don't want to get into individual projects, correct? So if we have, some of these things on the list, I'd like to see us maybe look at our budget, but I don't want to go down a route, go down that road and then.
So I think what staff is trying to do tonight is provide the framework for what probably needs to be multiple ongoing conversations in order to make progress on that. We are not telling you that you need to decide now. Councilmember Schlink is correct. And one of the things that we talked about at our last meeting was, we recognize, and Town Center was a big one, if you recall, we talked about, that still has to be fit into this equation somewhere, and we know that. And any decisions you make on any of these affect the other decisions you're able to make, depending on how much capacity you want to explore. And we want to be able to provide the help. It's probably an ongoing iterative process as to what you might potentially want to ask the voters to approve and pay for through a tax rate increase. But we see this as the start of many conversations this year and perhaps why we don't think November 19 is a realistic time to shoot for, for a bond referendum. The other thing that council has talked about is not just a one-time bond referendum discussion, but whether you build on it and then every other year or every four-years philosophy that some of our either peer municipalities around here do. So that's more than one conversation.
All right. And this is really, as Martha talks about, a framework. This gives you a visual of what a potential framework would look like, when we could continue and start those conversations because you realistically can't align to a 2019 for referendums. So that allows you the time and the due diligence to put towards thinking through this. Just a few points, just to help you put some things into context. What's a penny on the tax rate? It's running at about $490,000. So just as you think about what the value of a penny might get you in debt service for a bond, you could potentially use that. We are retiring debt, that's very important to know and recognize in 2021 and 2022. So we could run analysis, you know, depending on what your interests are as you whittle those projects down and help you understand what that cost would be in the future. But we've got to talk about conceptually, what are your interests? What are the most important things that you can agree on? And start whittling down and developing some bond packages. And I think the other thing that you need to talk about as council, is it 2020 or 2021 that you might be interested in doing a bond referendum? Because that would change the timeline, could potentially stretch it out if you did not do 2020. And remember, in November 2020, that's actually fiscal year impact of 2021. So just want to put some context around that too. And as I work through the budget forecast, I will recalibrate your debt service ratio. That's really important to stay within your policy. As it was last reported, it was estimated below 12% with the new debt that was coming on. I will recalibrate that for you and let you know with the budget what that is looking like with that new debt that's coming on this fiscal year and what potential capacity you have there, okay? So in looking ahead, again, some of the things that you as council need to potentially start discussing is, you know, establishing really what that referendum timeline would be. So what is it that you're shooting for, 2020 or 2021? And then now let's back up and start developing that timeline and work towards that with those steps of a preliminary phase and then your more formal phase and what that timeline looks like. Identifying the bond packages, you've heard me say that several times. That's a really important piece because you need to have something to message out to the community. And then we talk about how that would be done. What do you need us to do for you? Financial analysis, of course, determine preliminary dates with LGC and doing that whole formal thing. So, go ahead.
One of the other things that influence the timeline is how, when, and where you want that citizen input. Council's talked about that, you know, a committee to vet all projects, some projects, rank the ones that are important to you. That's part of the discussion we feel that you need to have, is where, what is the role and where is it for your citizen committee? That'll also influence our communications outreach timeline, what information's out there.
So then we've got really what are the next step and what are your information needs?
Just a second, I think, situation, so add some, add some.
Can you go back to the slide where the timeline is like for the? So pretty much from what I see is if we had to decide on a bond for 2020, we got to make addition by July 2019. That's now?
Well, he's talking about, are you talking about project, identifying your projects?
Absolutely, yeah, because that's where the first tip is coming, preliminary discussions. That's almost a year and a half before we go to November 2020, right?
So remember, a typical project, process can be anywhere from nine months to 12 months. So you can, this one is pretty stretched out over a period of time for the 2020. So what I'm saying to you is you do have some flexibility within this timeline that's shown here to work on those conversations.
No, my, yeah, I get that. My question more was if we lock in in July 2019 on a project, then are we kind of locked until the whole process? Or is there any lead way, the way the bond is written, that you have some kind of a thing? Because the priorities are keeping changing, you know? But at the same time, we want, we can't go for bonds every time. So we had to hit the right thing. So by, is it sufficient time between now and July? Because we'll be getting busy with the budget and other stuff to make addition in July 2019.
So the most important date that you begin to lock things in is that preliminary discussion with LGC. So that is at the end of your preliminary phase, that's more in that June 20, May to June 20. So you've got flexibility in your conversation from now, July 2019, to then to work out the details, work out with us how you want us to engage the community. But once we engage a conversation with LGC, they're expecting us to be able to put in front of them what would be those ballot or category of bond packages and the types of projects that would be in them.
That's, that's.
And I think that, and we've had this discussion sort of backwards, I'll call it, in the past. The importance of looking at the projects is one to size, to size the amount of money that you want to request and have, we often talk about what lessons have we've learned? Well, one of those is getting projects ready. And so some investment because our cost estimates can become more refined. So that's an important factor. You also want, when Jeannie talks about types of project, it's important to the message that you convey to the citizens as to the types of things you would be using the project for. And we've talked about that from the framework of how the bond order or the request to the voters gets drafted versus the specificity of what you worded. And that's a step in this process that is not done at this point. But you have to do what you've promised the voters. So how you frame the request to the voters becomes very important. But it's important for you to know what your priorities are so that we can help estimate a realistic request that gets you the projects you desire.
Let's go back down here. It's really what I would turn over to you is to talk about really what kind of timeline might you be considering. It's not anything you need to decide tonight, but it does help staff for, to know where the target is because we need to know if it's 2020 or 2021 because we need to then back up from that date. Because when you get in the formal phase, it's very specific planning with LGC that we have to build that part of the timeline. And then we can go forward and build from there, the preliminary part of that. The other thing is really what other information can we provide you between now and then? You heard that I'll have you updated CIP project profiles with your budget. You've heard that I'll recalibrate your debt service ratio so you'll know what your capacity is within your existing load. You've heard really what your penny on the tax rate is, it's very important. You have, in your debt valuation, you have a lot of capacity there. So that'll be other information that I could just recalibrate and bring that information to you. So I turn it over to you, Mayor, and anything I can provide you.
Okay, so we want to start with just general thoughts or what other information we need? And we're going to circle through this a couple of times tonight. So Councilmember Rao, you want to get us started?
Yeah, I'm just going to share a couple of thoughts and then really want to listen to everyone else and then think about things. But, I mean, for me, first of all, the one thing that I would want to know is what's the advantage of? Well, obviously, the advantage of doing it in 2020 is that we would move on projects quicker than waiting till 2021. But the way I look at it, I would feel more comfortable finishing off the bond projects that we've had going for a number of years, which the good news is we're on our way now with MAFC, it was a little bit delayed. We're on our way with McCrimmon. But getting those projects done and having a little bit more time to look at the projects that we have. And now, I think the advantage we have for future bond projects is that we put a lot of work on a strategic plan. So, you know, I look at transportation mobility as an issue and congestion that continues to come up for the last two years for every citizen we meet with or here at City Hall, Town Hall. So I think transportation projects, for me... So I think transportation projects, for me, would be an important part of any future bond, looking at, I saw on the chart NC 54, airport, I mean, contributions with a question mark, Airport Boulevard Extension, maybe other projects on our transportation plan that we can execute quicker so that we can get projects moving. So I think as I look at, you know, transportation and then public safety is one of our goals in strategic plans. So I'd definitely look at the fire. I think what I'm trying to do is we've got to, we have so many projects that I think that we, when we made the decision of what projects, we need to figure out which ones go on which bucket. And those buckets have been laid out for us in a strategic plan. And we didn't have a strategic plan as thought out as we did when we did the bond projects years ago and how we determine. I don't even remember how we came upon determining some of those projects. But that's just a comment that I want to make to the council as sort of the framework we have to make the decision. I'm open to doing the bond earlier. My concern is that we haven't completed the projects that we had, the bonds that were issued in 2012. And the advantage of having it in an odd year election year is that that's when, even though it's a lower turnout election, you have more people that are vested in the election in the local governments, cities. So by having a bond in the odd years, you're actually going to have more chance to focus on that and educate the voters on it. In 2020, you're going to have it from the president, presidency to the, all the way down, the legislature, the judges, the Supreme Court, the ballots. There could be a bond the legislature is talking about doing on school construction. So there's going to be so many competing interests that I, I mean, that is one legitimate concern I have, is it better to have it in an odd year, even if it kicks? So those are just a couple of comments. I could go on and on. But I mean, the first point is where does it fit in our strategic plan? And for me, I think it's transportation would be one area, public safety, we see the fire, maybe something with the parks in terms of livable neighborhoods, greenways, projects, quality of life. And then those would be the areas. And then we look and say, okay, which ones do we think we can come together as a council, identify and move forward on some of these important areas? And then I want to hear from others on what you think of the timeline. I just feel a little rushed.
So one of the things that... One of the things that we can provide an update is just a, probably more a spreadsheet or a timeline. We've got the Clearpoint product that's going to be in development. But for this discussion, I think just a simple rundown of when those projects are going to be complete in relation to a bond timing is something that we could provide to help facilitate that part of the conversation.
Councilmember Caramella?
Martha, do we have a ballpark estimate, like how much can we go on a bond? Like I can recollect that number. This is the max that, you know, we can go and then, do you have that with you?
So speaking a little bit off the cuff, I think what we're sharing with you is our debt capacity is expansive, just in general, in relation to, what's the one that we have substantial capacity?
So debt to assessed value?
Debt to assessed value. We're very, that's not one, it's a debt ratio we calculate, but that's not a factor for us. So the amount that you're able, the amount of debt you can have is related to your total expenditures. So as your expenditures fluctuate, it affects what your debt capacity is. And that changes every year with our budget. So that's why we calculate that. And that's that 15% that Jeannie referenced.
How much is that approximately?
So that is the piece that I'm recalibrating for you that I'll bring back in the budget. So that'll be a bit of information that'll help you understand what capacity you now have with the new debt that's come on recently with MAFC and McCrimmon Phase Two.
But I'm just looking at a ballpark. Is it like 10, 15, 20?
So it was estimated at 12 with Davenport when we were going through the bond sale. So that's the number that I want to reevaluate and make sure, has it moved? Because it's based on expenditures within the year. So as expenditure value changes, so does the percentage of that debt in that expenditure value.
So bottom line, anywhere between 10 to 15.
But I think, excuse me for interrupting, but I think where you're going to see this process, we're going to ask the voters to increase taxes. So that's, I think you're on a different wavelength. I think you're going somewhere else. But I'm just telling you, this bond referendum says, okay, we're going to spend $20 million. It's going to cost five cents. That's why you do this. They taught, there's another debt which we can do, but yes, then you still have to pay it to your tax increase.
So Councilmember Slings, correct. The third one is, is we're not just adding this to our debt capacity. We're providing a, we're requesting from the voters and they would be approving a supplemental revenue source to pay the debt service.
And that will start immediately or only when the project starts?
So that there are a number of parameters as to when you can start raising that tax. One of the things that has been done in the past was advance collection of tax revenues to pay to get the project ready. That's why one of the challenges with that process is, is we were at the end of the bond timeframe before the projects were ready to go because of all the design stuff. So that's one of the reasons why you're seeing some recommendations to start getting those projects ready. You have to know that they're going to be the priorities. You don't want to spend that money unless you're committed to the project. But then it's ready to go so that the voters would be able to see immediate progress on a project that they agreed to pay for.
Okay. So I understand what Mike was talking about, but for me, I'm looking at, because there were two discussions which went, I remember, Martha, you corrected me, is if a project A is $5 million, we don't have to put the $5 million into the bond money. You know, we can put 2.5 or 3 and the rest can come through a different source of funding, right? Like because you're not locking in the whole amount into it. Because that's where I'm trying to get back of my mind is five cents tax increase is just 2.5 million, right? Or how does?
That's a lot more. There's a multiplier to that.
To multiply. So do we have some kind of a, like Excel that we can play with?
Well, you've actually done that before. And that's another tool that we can bring out because, so, correct. You could, let's use McCrimmon Parkway as an example. We, of the $20 million that were borrowed, 14.3 were devoted to McCrimmon Parkway. That's the total cost of the project. That's spread out over many years in a debt service payment. So our debt service on that is, what, $700,000 or something like that? So it's, you know, remember, you're borrowing money over time, just like your mortgage at home, with a low interest rate. This is the most cost effective money that we can borrow. And again, very similar. We borrowed the money and we chose to use it for McCrimmon Parkway Extension, but the way the bond was approved, it could have been for any number of transportation projects that met those criteria. So that's the flexibility that you have depending on how you ask the question of the voters.
So can I ask a question? So to Satisha's point, if we ask the voters for five cents, that would be $2.5 million. $2.5 million would be the debt on how much for projects? I think that's what he's trying to get at. He's trying to figure out how many of these projects could we get on with five cents?
It's 20, it's a little over 20 million. The debt service. So I'm at 2 million right now, at 20 million, so just a little bit more than that.
Asking the voters for five cents would mean funding, paying for over time $20 million worth of projects.
And just a reminder, not to make this too convoluted, but it's also based on what our assessed value is on our tax rate. So that continues to go up, knock on wood, that, you know, we incrementally, year over year, get more to contribute in our, in our assessed value.
That's a good point you're saying because our assessment is every four years, right? So suppose we start with five and it's going up, but do we change the bond at the time? But bond is already fixed at the time you vote, right? Like with the percentage that you're going to charge?
You have, you always have the options to not assess the whole tax rate that the bond voters are approved. I don't know that staff would ever recommend that you do that versus give them the projects that they're looking for to fund with those tax dollars. But those options do exist for you.
Last question is about 2021 and 2010. Do we have more research on off season versus a general election? One thing is for sure, talking to each of the Wake County Commissioners, they're not going down on their tax increase. They're continuously adding up on their end, either the school bond or other stuff. So waiting longer is only adding to our queue, you know? Because I'd rather go into our queue first than just waiting for 2021. They would add one more bond and then also state would add one more bond adding to that. So that was just, I don't know how the whole thing works, but the election is...
So I think that's part of the strategy that you have to talk about. For example, the November 18 bond was Wake Tech and Parks and Rec for Wake County and schools. And those needs are not going to go away for that entity. And they're making some of the same strategic decisions that you are about how, when, where, how much. If we do nothing this year, our citizens' taxes will go up, I think, at least four cents for that November 18 bond referendum. As I hear Wake County talk, additions to their budget are associated with tax increases through bonds or just through their operating. So yes, that is part of the strategy that we have to consider in that other things affect our decisions as well. And does it get lost in the mix or do we want to, but that is the part of the conversation that we're asking you to have.
Councilmember Johnson?
So a couple of, couple of thoughts. I do think, and I've been saying this for a number of years now, I think it is critically important that we have a bond strategy or a long-term plan. So however, whether we choose 2020 or 2021 now, I'd really like us to start working toward that strategy, too, because we're not going to get all these projects in this next round of bonds. And there are some projects that are probably going to be potentially more important to the public and they'll be more willing to fund through a tax rate than others. And I think that needs to, we really need to think thoughtfully about that. And I will tell you, public safety is, you know, rises to the top. I know transportation is always an issue, but, you know, funding of fire stations and the safety and the response time that that brings is really important. And the public has embraced that in the past. The bonds that I've been a part of in the past have always occurred in the even years. And we get a much, much higher turnout, voter turnout in the even years than we do in the odd years. So I would prefer to see a bond in 2020. I would prefer us to start working toward November of 2020. And if something happens along the way, to Jeannie's point, we have lots of time, but if something happens along the way and we choose to punt it a year to 2021, we can. But I would prefer that we start, start planning toward a November 2020 bond and then, and then, of course, you know, come up with some kind of bond strategy and long-term plan. And of course, like anything we do, our plans are flexible and they're breathing, living, breathing documents and we can change them as we go. But I think we need to set some guidelines up for ourselves. And to this idea about, you know, Wake County and even the state maybe doing, you know, I think, to Satisha's point, I think we need to just get in line, too, and be at the head of the line and invest in our community and invest in our citizens. And if we, if we share a compelling reason for why these projects are important to our citizens, we won't have a problem. I think, I think the citizens will, will understand the need for these projects now, whether, you know, I don't, I don't, we're not really even, we talked about a five cent tax rate, but we really haven't even figured that out yet. So, you know, it could be a two cent, who knows? It could be like we did in the past, it was multiple years, we kind of stepped, stepped up the tax rate. So there's lots of strategies still to come and there's a whole lot more discussion. I also think 2020 is going to be, to Councilmember Rouse's point, we have some outstanding projects that we need to complete before we ask the public for more money to invest in more projects. And I think we're at that point now where these projects, the McCrimmon Extension will be done, we just heard, by the end of this year. Morseville Carpenter, hopefully that's starting very shortly. And that will probably be done early 2020. And the Aquatics and Fitness Center should be done either the end of 19 or 2020. So all of that will be wrapping up. So I think I would prefer not to wait too long to start the next round of projects. Again, there are some significant needs in this community and I think our citizens are deserving of some of these projects that we have on our CIP list. So 2020 would be where I would, I would head right now. And then to the question about how we did this in the past and how did these projects even get chosen? And what we did in the past was we had buckets, just like Jeannie has showed us. We had the buckets. We had the public safety bucket, we had transportation bucket, we had Parks and Rec's bucket. And we asked the public, the public came in and weighed in and told us what they wanted. We provided them information. We did it in this, I remember doing it at least once in this room. And there were, there were, the projects were all around the room on display and our staff was here to answer questions. And then we asked citizens to weigh in on what projects they would, they wanted to see. And that's how we came up with the McCrimmon Extension, which we called the 54 Bypass, and then the Morseville Aquatic Center. And of course, there was the Morseville Community Park, there was a phased project in there, too. But that's how we came up with those projects, the citizens weighed in. So I would like to see a, like we talked about in the past, an advisory committee of our citizens helping us, you know, maybe not identifying the actual projects because I would like the greater public to do that, but our citizens helping us with this process and how to share it, how to communicate it, what buckets and how to, you know, what buckets to present to our, to the public and then help us, you know, spread the word on everything. I'd like to use them to that end. But I think the citizen advisory committee to help with a bond referendum is, should be early and an important step in this process. And then, of course, there's lots of public, there should be lots of public input, whether that's online input, and we did this in the past, do online input, public meetings here for folks to come out. We can videotape it, we can videotape, we can do Youtubes so folks can see the different projects. I think there's lots we can do to help our citizens choose the projects that they want to see in 2020.
Councilmember Caramella?
No, I agree. I think both are talking the same things, but when we engage the public engagement section, as you're saying, as Steve is saying, is some of the projects have to be complete. Otherwise, it's just going to, you open that up, then pretty much they'll say, okay, where are the previous projects in the pipeline before we move forward? So that section is the most important section, but at the same time, when you open it up, it's based on our progress of finishing those projects that are in the pipeline.
I agree. That's a very good point. I agree. But that's, that's not the one and only spot for public engagement. I, having been through this before, we did public engagement, it was more in the spring before the November votes. So... So I would think we would start maybe with our citizen committee, you know, in, in, you know, in 2019. But engaging the greater public, you don't have to, you know, we can start it now, we can do it in January of 2020, we can, you know, we have lots of opportunity. That's not the one and only spot. Engagement is going to go on for not just August of 2019, it's going to go on for a while. And we don't even know where we're headed yet. So I can't imagine we're ready to ask the public what projects in August of 2019.
Do that on the front end. Once you decide what you want that smaller bucket to, to be out there, what you decide that is important in that cluster of projects, how you want them to be put out. And it was an open house, an open forum situation. And I agree, that was a very productive process. But you can also do it on the other side. Once you get them identified, get some additional feedback, information sharing on why these projects that are identified in the bond ballot worksheets as important. So you do it on the front end and you can do it a little on the back end. I will say, once you engage LGC in a conversation, in the plenary discussions, they are expecting you to have your packages relatively sorted out. Maybe some, some specifics might be more generalized in that first conversation, but they are expecting council to say, here's what we want these ballots, languages or categories to look like.
And I'll offer, you know, the, the citizen participation engagement is, is critical. That said, council needs to provide the guiding framework for, one, you've identified projects. One, two, you've got the financial capacity information and how it influences and what the strategic plan goals are. So there has to be, just opening the barn door doesn't help the citizens help us. So, so really want to, you know, define that strategy. I'll also offer, it's different than last time. Just, just look at our population and the different things that we're addressing. So lots of lessons learned and good things to remember about the last time, but, but we're, we're breaking new ground with this kind of bond referendum. And I do, do feel like we're able to demonstrate not only that projects will get completed, but, but that we're, we're better at, at doing some of the things to, to make this a better process.
I think Councilmember Schlink had some thoughts.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to look at what we did last time. I think if you, we did it probably in about six or seven months last time. And I don't think we had a, a citizen panel necessarily. Not to say that isn't, we shouldn't do that or should do it, we just didn't do it last time. I don't know how many towns do that. But I also would just, staff's input on that, I know it'd be extra time and effort. And I, but I think it went well last time and I think we also had online choosing of that and that was fairly new at the time. And it seemed to work well, but. So yeah, 2020, I think would be there as we could do anything. I think there is no, going to be no bond referendum this year. From my perspective, kind of like the last time we did this, I'd rather do it sooner than later. I'd rather get the money and to start using the money, I think the, some of the logic we did last time, we did phase it, two cents in the write-off and then two cents two years later. And then we used the money to front projects. And I think part of the idea was that we were going to pay ourselves back. I don't know if that's going to happen, but that's what we did. So consider that, staff. Because I think the more money we can collect and we could start to front load some of these projects and the bucket process worked. And I think it can again work this time. I just think, I would add a bucket about land acquisition, because I think we heard tonight that we need to buy some more land. For fire stations, municipal buildings or parks.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlink. There was a lot in there. I was just catching up by typing some of that in. I'm in agreement with some of my colleagues that I think sooner is better than later. I'm also a little concerned about asking for money before projects are done. But when I look at August 2019, we're not going to have everything done, but there are 10 months until June 2020 when we have to have those firm discussions. So we can get some of the early stuff going. I'm a little unsure, I need to talk more with my colleagues about the value of the, the panel. I like the idea of them helping us share things out. But also I want more people than just a small group of 15 or so deciding what the buckets are going to look like. But then I'm saying, if we don't do that, then it's just us seven deciding what the buckets look like. So there's a balance there. So I'd be in, in favor of exploring a panel a little bit more and seeing how that would work into this framing. In particular buckets, I think it would be helpful for us to know, you mentioned that it would be important to have items that are executable soon after approval. So if you can put another column in your list about which ones, you've told us in the past, which ones are bondable, which ones are, make good for bonds, which ones are also, we can execute right upon approval. And the ones that can, maybe those sort of rise up on the list a little bit? Or do you think all of them could be?
All of them are executable if you've designed them and prepped them for ready to go. So you have to front that to do that. And that's the premise of some of what you saw and what you can expect to see as capital project recommendations as a part of the proposed operating budget.
Right. And so putting a million dollars into that level sort of commits us to moving forward, at least if not bonding them and funding them in some other way. Because bonds are just one means of funding. You don't have to use bonds.
So I'm, I'm not sure we're talking the same point. There's an investment in a project before you put a shovel in the ground. So the, the proposed CIP funds that I'm proposing would be the design, the survey, the appraisal, the environmental to accurately design and get a cost estimate for a project. That gets it closer to being executable once the bonds are approved.
Okay. And it's just my impression that if we approve that for FY 2020, we're committing to following through on those projects, because otherwise that's money that's going to out the door.
I agree with that. That is, that is sort of my request to council. You have to, you have to be willing to proceed with those projects within a reasonable amount of time after you've done that work, whether a bond referendum be packaged or not. And then you're looking at those other sources of ways to fund those expenses.
Okay. And as was somewhat touched upon, I think we might need to add a few more CIP projects, like the police needs, that might be another building, so it's at least parked to the side if we're not doing it right away. Also, some kind of set aside for potential town center, either the community center or a parking deck or two separate ones, just things that are sort of in place so that we see them on the list of our needs over time. And I'm a big believer that right now we have more needs than we have easy funding options. So I would like to do things sooner rather than later and find out which buckets the citizens are most interested in. Transportation is really important. I see Airport Boulevard Extension as a way to get us closer to 54. And as we move closer to a good plan for 54, we might want to have also a little set aside, you already have it in there for that. So public safety, as was mentioned by Councilmember Johnson, I think that's a really important one. Those fire stations, I think that we can get a pond for them. And once the fire station study comes back and really tells us what we need, how soon, I think that will be something that we really can knock out and try to move those forward. So those are my initial thoughts about where the bond buckets should be. I really like the idea of Morseville Community Park. Our Parks and Rec Master Plan indicated that we do have some needs there. We have the small problem that we asked for that before, they gave us the money and we didn't execute. So we need to message that in a strong way, that we are better now and we will have better cost estimates and we will follow through in a more timely manner on the things that we do indicate that we're trying to do. So I think we're in a good position to take this opportunity and move forward and pass some bonds and really show some progress. Because as was mentioned, we got these three projects that are finishing up and we'd like to be able to tell people what the next projects are that are enhancing their quality of life. So I think this has been a really good discussion tonight and it's a start, as staff has mentioned. That's all that I have to share right now. Does anyone else have any other thoughts on the bond CIP discussion that we just had? She had to drop off a little bit earlier, but thank you very much for reminding me, I appreciate that. Does staff have any other questions, any other thoughts?
No, I, just a, a quick next steps. So there's a couple takeaways that we know we can provide. You're, you're going to really talk about this, I'll call it peripherally as a part of the budget discussion, is when the next time you'll, you'll hear about perhaps CIP projects. And, and, and so I just encourage you to be prepared to talk about those projects, that, that we've given you some insight that you're, you're going to be seeing coming forward. And, and then it would be following budget adoption that I think we'd be coming back again to really continue a bond referendum discussion, just, just timing wise.
I see head nods that that seems, sounds like a good plan forward. Appreciate the starting of a framework. I think that's on us to try to give you better direction about how we want this to look. But I heard from a couple of different people that we really liked the way it worked last time in 2012. I enjoyed being part of that process from the outside and this group did a really good job as the council members sort of leading that. So look forward to having some form of that in the future. That was a really good meeting that we had in here with all the boards up. So now we're at 9:23, we're just about at three hours. There was, did anyone have roundtable discussion items that they'd like to bring up tonight? I see, no, no.
I actually had indicated I'd provide some updates of, of that information. May I, may I do that?
Why don't we do that, see how long that takes? And it looks like Councilmember Schlink might have a roundtable that he'd like to address. Steve, did you have one as well? Okay, I do not have one, so.
Yes. Yes, but since I finished this at four o'clock, no electronic copy yet. So I'm just going to give you a quick summary of what you have. This is so that you can have some time to review it before our next roundtable discussion. I had committed to providing an update of all of the roundtable topics that had been provided or had been done really since we started this process back in 2016. So this is an update of a similar spreadsheet that you saw six, eight months ago. The first one goes through July of 2018. And so you've got the topic, what we talked about, the action that was taken, sort of a status and any comments that are important to that. The next two pages you have are any of the items on this first document that are not complete for some items. So I've given you the whole inventory of everything that's been talked about and you can see which ones are considered complete. And then just a subset of that is the ones that are not marked complete. And, and then in a narrative format, I've sort of provided a status of when you can expect some action on any of those items that are not complete or what might have to occur before there could be items. So that's really just for your review, to know what we've done with the process. And then the last one we have is really, we had sort of taken a pause on the roundtable in primarily because of the comprehensive transportation plan. So our, our first meeting that we really talked about roundtable topics again was February. So we've had February and March. So this captures those and sort of what the status is on those and when you might be able to see something coming back for those. So that's really just information for your review at this point about things that are in progress on things we've already talked about.
Very helpful. Council, have any comments or thoughts about what she just presented us?
We, we can do that next time if, if, if that helps. Just a reminder that for May, the roundtable is not on a Monday because of budget. So we've sort of tacked it on to the end of the May 30 budget discussion. Just, just looking forward is, is after tonight when we'd be talking about some of those things.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Schlink, how many roundtable items did you like to bring forth?
Just one.
Okay, let's hear what you got.
Yeah, well, it was going over the retreat minutes from two years ago and then last year. Again, the TOD, I think it was a high priority and I was just wondering if we could get a briefing maybe by DIF? And it was kind of brought up, but I think they're ready, they could brief kind of what they could anticipate with the TOD area and strategies.
So that's actually a funding request that we have some information on that would have to be considered by town council to have them start work on the TOD.
Okay. And the last time we did a deep dive on TOD was what?
Did the, previously the town staff has done work about the overlays.
The airport overlays or?
They did TOD overlays years ago as part of the land use transportation update plan right after that, that was part of that. But there was some stuff about, or some market analysis done, looked at the quadrants. I'm only looking at the one quadrant, not all four, but just one.
Okay. Does other council members have thoughts about TOD and reactivating efforts in that direction? Councilmember Johnson?
So I, so you want to engage DFI though? That's what your request is?
Yeah, I think that was the, the get two years ago when we put it, we ranked it very high and we never did anything with it. And then I brought it up again at the last retreat and I think that's, the minutes indicated that that's what was one of the things that was being looked at.
So let me add some clarification. One of the, the, I'm not, Todd, correct my, the, the, there were five priorities identified to be worked on first. Am I, am I correct? The, the TOD being one of them. So as staff has started working through that process with the strategic plan, we inquire to DFI about could they, would they, and how much would a market analysis cost? So that's what I think what Councilmember Schlink is talking about, whether you want to proceed with that as a part of a strategic plan initiative. Accurate in that?
Well, again, I think part of it too is the big picture about acquiring it and the strategies on that. As we heard tonight, we need land. That was how I wanted to view it.
Yep. The site control is very important, we've learned that. Assistant Town Manager Todd Wright, do you have anything to add?
I would just say, yeah, Martha's correct in, in terms of the opportunity. And from this point, you know, really it's a, it's a budget issue if we want to engage DFI for this market analysis.
And, and I just have to clarify, DFI wouldn't be looking at land acquisition. They'd be looking at a market analysis. I think what, if, if I could speak for Councilmember Schlink, I think he's advocating that we need to get that site control for that parcel of property, which is just a part of that discussion that council needs to have as a part of that strategic initiative. Accurate?
We kind of had that because the land owner was willing to talk about it.
I agree with you, but council did not proceed with that conversation.
Councilmember Johnson?
So I, I think, you know, this is a really important project, the TOD area, and I'm, I'm very supportive of the project. But we're also trying to do a town center project that's going to require a lot of effort and, so I, I, you know, I think we need to decide where, where do we want to invest our time and our energies? Are we, I, I think we need to, we're working so hard on the town center, I'd like to focus on that. And then I absolutely would like to focus on the TOD area. I, I guess my concern, that's why I'm trying to clarify what the ask is here, because... I guess my concern, that's why I'm trying to clarify what the ask is here because I'm okay with going out and doing a market analysis, but like we just heard tonight, and a market analysis that sits for three years and you don't do anything with it is, is of, it has some value clearly, but you've got to redo it. So unless we're going to jump and act on the TOD area, I think we, if our focus is still on the town center, let's kind of get the town center up and running and let's get that project moving along. And then I'm 100% behind, you know, refocusing and looking up at TOD. I just don't want to throw money away if we're just going to have to redo it again, you know, redo an analysis or do some study again.
I'm trying to say though is whatever the council would need in order to make a better decision about acquiring the TOD area.
So that's not what you first asked. That's why I'm trying to get it.
That's what I'm trying to explain. Again, this is of all, but I'm concerned that for two years now, this was a priority. What would, what's the information, I guess the ask is that you guys want in order to make a decision about whether you want to buy additional property up in that area or not? And I think staff, the discussions I've had, they said that maybe it's a market analysis. So that's why I think that was brought out. But again, I'm not, whatever, the question is what would you need in order to make a better decision?
Councilmember Caramella?
That's a good question. I would say the land use plan that's getting done in the sub area, right, is coming up as like what, it should be coming in the next six months. Yes, but we have not seen.
We have one currently, it's 10 years ago.
No, 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 but the current one, the house I live in, they're working on that whole corridor, the TOD corridor too. Is that true, Martha? Is that included in the, or?
It's one portion of the TOD area, Courtney's coming up.
And the other thing is with the great separation, which is going to happen. And the third is the station, you know, the location, that's transit stop. No, I think those informations we get solidified, obviously, like, you know, the demand will be more, or basically, like, we have to have a site control sooner than later, but that information would be really helpful to see how we can incorporate in a bigger discussion because it's all comes down to the bond referendum. Do we want to put this into that, along with the parks and recs, the land for?
We already heard that we need, there's possibly want to have to move the fire station two somewhere. I think you'd want to leave it somewhere in those corners. So we know, we know that we want to expand the park, Church Street Park, where are you going to put parking? I mean, I'm just trying to play game and look at, we have needs. I think it's an opportunity that is, the more we talk about it, the more it's out there in the open. So I think it's going to people the value of it. After all those road improvements, it's going to go sky high versus doing it now. That's all I'm trying to say.
So can I, so I agree with you, Michael. So here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to have a really good plan and a good land use plan for the TOD area because I agree with you, knowing where the station is going to be, private development will come in and fund it and build it, as long as we have a plan that they can follow, as long as we have a vision for that area. I'd like to concentrate on that. I think the land will be incredibly valuable and I think, like we've seen in other areas, it'll be developed the way we want then, if we have a really clear vision.
I'm going to say that the question is just on the table is, should we pursue finding more information? We are not trying to resolve the solution here, right? Like that's, that's pretty much the whole roundtable discussion is, is there a merit to it? Can staff look into it and come back? That's, we're not even going, like, the staff can come back and say, this is what we think. This is what it is. And that's where the whole discussions, if you will, start looking at it. Is that fair enough? Like?
That's what I'm trying to say and that's been on the table over two years now, so I'm just trying to break that up.
Okay.
And if we need to go into a closed session to discuss that.
We could have Courtney Tanner, Planning Director, share her thoughts.
Just to quickly answer the question, what was being studied as part of the sub area? The TOD East is having the detailed study. The main TOD site was previously studied. It will be included as part of the land use plan update, but there's not a sub area study of the original main TOD site.
Will that then get a refresh of what the old study is still accurate or does it change with the new? Because I don't know when that was done several years ago, right?
So Housiel Levine is about, is reading all of our existing plans as part of the update. A fair amount will transfer over, some of it will be modified as well. It certainly is not going to supersede the TOD probably in this particular case because it's a main site and a lot of the information, even though it's an older market study, is still germane today. It was really about identifying the site, identifying a potential over fats and identifying uses. Most likely would generate something very similar to what we're probably seeing kind of at the town center, you know, multiple stories, mix of uses. And if you remember in your alternative two of the TOD East, what it identified there was like TOD centric, which is usually kind of a retail, you know, commercial uses on the bottom, potentially non-residential on the top. It's what you will most likely see on the other side as well.
Ted, that, from my perspective, part of what we were talking about earlier with the town center was not having site control. This allows site control, zoning can change it however we see fit, so zoning doesn't matter to me as we've seen with the current town center. It's already changed from what the original plan was years ago. And this won't be developed anytime soon, but there'll be opportunities, I think, to move things there that we might have to, like a fire station, additional parking for things, whatever.
Can I ask a question, Courtney? Did I hear you right? I hear that we already had a study of that TOD area on kind of this side of 54. We are not going to be able to make tweaks and changes to that or we will?
You will. So the entire town is included in the land use plan. We just took a deeper dive into the sub areas, since they were really some of the larger areas that have never had a deep dive with the greatest development potential or redevelopment potential.
So I'm hearing we're kind of more interested in sort of taking a wait and see until the land use plan sort of comes through and then taking a look at that. But I do agree that prices are only getting higher and I wish that we are a little bit more ahead on some of these other high priorities that we've also identified so that we could move forward on more things. So. Councilmember Caramella?
I would just say like what you said is okay, you know, but as part of a line item review and come back after the land use is done, so that it's like a.
So we can formally add it to this list?
Yeah, absolutely.
And so it doesn't get lost in the tracking and hopefully we can take another look at it sometime down the road. But yeah, I would like to see us get a little more progress on the town center because I think we can walk and chew gum, but we really need to focus if we're going to move that forward. Any final thoughts on that, Councilmembers Link? I don't think anyone else had anything for a roundtable? Ms. Page, yes?
So I've got just two more pieces of paper I'd like to pass out to you. The first one is related to some date availability for two items. One is councils expressed an interest in a sooner rather than later continued discussion with the town of Cary. We have a roundtable scheduled for June 24. You may have heard it referenced as one of the dates that the town of Cary council members had on hold when we were trying to do dates. If council would want, currently what you have scheduled for June 24 is your second joint meeting with the planning and zoning board for the public transportation study in a roundtable. If you wanted to perhaps hold that roundtable and use an hour of that meeting at the front to have a dinner, maybe beginning at six o'clock with the town of Cary elected officials and then spend an hour to continue conversation about strategies for NC 54, we could do that. So I'm seeking your interest in doing that or not, so that we could confirm with Cary whether they should continue to hold that date or take it off their calendars. The second question is if we want to continue to talk about some of our working relationships and other things that we're working on, we need some time identified to do that. So all of those dates you see are Saturdays in June. If, and you don't have to fill it out tonight, if you bring it back tomorrow, if you'd provide all those that you might be available, that at least helps us try to start coordinating such an effort. The other item that you have is just a revision to just the executive summary for the school CIP resolution that you'll be talking about tomorrow. I just made some edits to some dates and some grammar. The resolution itself has not changed, but this is a cleaner version. This is already posted to the public, so I just wanted you an opportunity to read it before tomorrow.
Okay, thank you for that. For the second question about the working relationships, timeframes, when you say half day, whole day, could you be a little bit more specific if it would be morning or afternoon if only a half day, if we should try to specify that?
Any information you can provide about availability helps us narrow things down.
Okay, and a half day would be like four hours?
Correct. And if we do a half a day, candidly, it should be the morning.
Okay, good info. And do you think that staff would be in a position to have, help us have a meaningful discussion on June 24 about 54? I understand that.
There are multiple layers to that. There were some immediate things we could provide as we continued. Do I think it's a decision-making meeting? No. I think that there was some desire to talk about some things sooner rather than later. There are some more longer-term strategies, but this way you will at least have some more conversation to talk about continuing what we talked about last week than waiting several more months to get a meeting scheduled.
Okay, any other, Councilmember Johnson?
So I, so I'm glad there were several of us there because I thought we left it that you all were going to go and kind of work on things and keep things moving along for us and.
And this would be the opportunity for Sean and I and staff to tell you what that's going to be, is sort of outlining that strategy. Well, that's all you really have. That's all you really have. You've got at least a 90-minute, and it was two hours last time, public transportation that is your commitment, your consultants are coming in and your PZ board, PCB is already scheduled.
Councilmember Johnson?
Do we, do we have to have food? I mean, do we have to have dinner? Can't we just have an hour meeting? I don't, I don't need, I don't need you all to feed me.
No, that's your choice, just that social had become part of the expectation for that meeting.
But this, this is a follow-on to that discussion to get at the meat of the topic. I would prefer to get to the meat of the topic and I don't need, we just socialize.
Are you proposing starting the meeting at six without food? Is that what you're saying? That is a choice that council can make.
Okay.
We would host it here. The roundtable is already scheduled here.
I'm sure they have food, but I think Cary would kind of expect it, so.
But if you remember, we talked, because Lori brought it up, she said, why don't we go back to having the meetings where we had real meaty meetings and I thought maybe this could be that compromise to, let's make this the meeting. We just had the social.
Give it up to the town managers to decide it.
So it could be as simple as food's available.
Eating meat at the same time. We don't have to, one hour of eating and talking.
Okay, so ideally you would like us to give this back to you tomorrow?
Sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Question about the, the, the proposed resolution. Can I make a recommendation on that?
A briefing sheet with a resolution attached. This is just an update to the resolution.
No, but if a resolution did, or how do they feel about doing a resolution?
We've drafted a resolution that we think is appropriate to approve. It's in your agenda materials.
Okay, I'm trying to understand and I'm sorry, maybe I'm.
Approved resolution of support as drafted is the staff recommendation, according to this.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand. So you're saying you didn't change it?
The resolution that was provided to you last week was not changed, just this page was changed, just to clear up some of the dates. I had some incorrect dates in there.
So this is what, with the resolution, this would go forward is what you're saying? I'm trying to.
We will decide that tomorrow night if we want to.
But will staff have a recommendation on the, sending forward the resolution? That's what I wanted to understand.
That's what that says, is my understanding, they're recommending it be approved as drafted.
Okay. And if I want to make a change or add something to it or whereas?
Then we will all decide that tomorrow night.
Do you want?
Yeah, if you can send it ahead of time, we won't deliberate on it, but it's nice to sort of have a heads up.
Okay.
If there's nothing else, I'd like to thank staff for helping us through all of tonight's discussion items and I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion from Satish Caramella. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes 4-0 and we are adjourned. It is 9:48. Thank you.